Okay, we previously opened tonight's meeting at 6:30. We then went into an executive session, so we're back in open session. And the first item on the agenda is public input. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard by the school committee? Any comments, questions, suggestions, et cetera? Yes, ma'am? What's this regarding? We're gonna get to that, okay? So, we're gonna entertain questions and comments at the time. We get to that on the agenda, alright? Okay, hearing nothing. The next item on the agenda is our student report. And Jackie Lenzaro is here tonight. Jackie?
Thank you. So, for sports, the baseball team beat Hamilton when I'm eight to seven for the North Division Three championship this Saturday. Their next game is Tuesday at four at La Luciere Park in Lowell versus Bellingham, and they are the South champions. And then, if they win that game, they will play Saturday for the D3 state championship. Boys tennis, one against Triton, four to one for the Division Three semifinals, but they lost this Saturday, one to four versus Weston for the Division Three finals. This Saturday, girls track attended All-State Cal's. Cole Godzensee came in first place of the entire state, which is amazing. Emily Murray came in fifth place, and Julia Valenti came in eighth place. Sports awards was last Tuesday. Cheering tryouts started last week. And three girls on the softball team made the Cal All-Star team, which is a lot of girls. It's the most girls from any town. Slam training was last Thursday and Friday. Graduation was last Friday. Well, it was really sad. It went really smoothly. Student council is collecting items for the time capsule this week and next week. So far, we already have two tables full of stuff dating all the way back to the 1960s, so we're really excited about that. We also are having a Back to the Future assembly on 11:30 on June 17th at the high school. Student council is attending the NEMAS end-of-the-year dinner this Wednesday at the Tewksbury Country Club. Senior week went really smoothly. It started with Monday night, they had prom. Wednesday, they had the yearbook signing party, which was a barbecue. And then Friday, they had the graduation and the all-night party. StuCo elections and class officer elections will be this Thursday and Friday. And finals start next Wednesday. So, for my project, this was like on the list of things I had to talk about, but I attended RILA, which stands for Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. Not this past weekend, but last weekend. A few students applied, and the North Reading Rotary Club sponsored five kids to go, and then the Wakefield Rotary Club sponsored two other North Reading kids to go. So, here's a picture of us all there. You can pass that around if you want. But we all had a great time, and we didn't really know what to expect. We got to the Boxford Rotary Camp on Friday at around three, so right after school. And we were arranged into families, so there was about eighty kids there, but we were arranged into groups of ten, and we called that our family. And so, they were a bunch of people from around Massachusetts, but I'd never met any of them before. And we spent the entire weekend with our family. And we did different activities regarding leadership and communication. And we also did a lot of outdoor activities, too, kind of like project adventure, if any of you know what that is. But I would like to talk about one of my favorite activities. So, we had a speaker come, and he spent an hour teaching us how to use our hand to punch through a wooden board.
He was successful.
So, we spent an hour like learning how to do it, but he also related it to leadership and stepping outside of your comfort zone and achieving your goals. So, my goal was, I'm taking a summer course at Harvard this summer, so my goal is getting an A in that class. And by punching through this board, it's showing us that we can accomplish everything, anything. And he actually, all eighty people were able to punch through the board. And some people, I'm shocked, they were able to do it. Because it was hard, kind of, but...
Are they trick boards?
What?
Are they trick boards?
No. They're real, like you can, it's a real board. It was really scary. Like, I didn't think I'd be able to do it, but all eighty kids were able to do it. So, that was my favorite part of the weekend.
Questions or comments?
It's very Karate Kid, too.
... the rest of the summer, because I know the students don't come in on the summer, but you would have to fall asleep.
Yeah. If I get re-elected, let's hope.
It sounds like you really enjoyed the experience. I mean, that was...
Yeah, I liked it a lot. At first, I was kinda skeptical, because my family, we're all a bunch of strong leaders, so we were fighting a lot at a lot of the activities.
That's good. That's part of the experience, alright?
Yeah. But it was like good to like know when to talk and when not to talk, and when to take someone else's ideas. So, it was, I liked it a lot.
Jackie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good summer. And don't feel like you have to say, yeah, we're not punishing you, but I think so you can leave.
Thank you.
Alright. Next on the agenda, we're gonna skip over a couple of items, and we have a request for a performing arts trip, I think, to Tanglewood. And Carla Lister is here, and I think Susan Fisher, and they're here to spring twelve students for the last two days of school to go on that trip. So, Carla, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That way, I don't feel so lonely. Alright, good. So, for those of you who do not know, my name is Carla Lister. I am the choral director and also the general music teacher at the middle school. I am also the K-12 Performing Arts Curriculum Coordinator for the district, so that's what brings me in front of you today. I have the privilege of talking about Days in the Arts at Tanglewood, affectionately known as DARTS, which is held in the Berkshires. It's been going on for the last forty-six years. It was started by the Boston Symphony Orchestra, and it was a chance to get students and teachers into a five-day, four-night camp that completely immersed these students in the arts, the passion of their choice. And it's an incredible opportunity that was brought to us by Ms. Fisher when she first started in the district. She's actually our coordinator for the district. And each year, we get to elect six students to go for the North Reading. We have two from each elementary school, and then six, excuse me, twelve students total, two from each elementary school and six at the middle school who get to go on this camp. So, while these students are there, they have the opportunity to pick an elective of their choice or an area of their choice which most speaks to their passion. It might be vocal music, instrumental music, drama, dance, visual art. They have that choice. And those five days, then, is focused on that passion, so they can develop it the best they can, and have people that are professionals in that area help them develop their skill and their love for that particular area. Before I go on too much further, I would really like to get the students up, so they can talk about the experience that they had. The first student I'm going to ask to come up is Mr. Billy Shaw. Mr. Shaw is a seventh grader at the middle school. He started in band and chorus in fourth grade at the Batch Elder Elementary School, and we've been able to keep him there. He is one of our wonderful trombone players for the district, so Billy?
Welcome, Billy.
When I went to Tanglewood, it was an amazing experience for me, because every day, we went and we practiced with everyone who chose that elective for four hours every day, so we could really develop it.
Wow.
And we went on different field trips throughout the week. One was to Tanglewood, and an amazing experience that I had there was we were walking by this little practice area for the Boston Symphony Orchestra, and I heard them practice, and I'll never forget it.
That's cool. Great. That's great, Billy. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next student is Ms. Laura Wagner. She's also a seventh grader in the district, and she started band in fourth grade. She's an amazing trumpet player. And when I say amazing, she sounds like she's a senior in high school. She is fantastic. Every year since she started in band in fourth grade, I have been trying to talk her into joining chorus, and it's until next year that I have finally talked her into coming to the dark side and joining chorus and also doing band. I'm very excited. So, Laura?
Hi.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Good evening. I've been sick all day.
She's been sick.
I might have dozed off.
When I went to Tanglewood, what I chose was to do the band option, because I play trumpet. So, every day, we would learn more about our instrument, how to play better. We would go to these creative expression classes, where we would learn to express ourselves a little bit better, do journal writing and that sort of thing. And every day, we'd go somewhere new, somewhere exciting. And I'll never forget, we went to see the Jacob's Pillow, the dance thing. We went to see the fiddler on the roof, I believe.
So, were you intimidated at all by being out there at Tanglewood?
A little bit. Most of the kids were a lot older than me.
Yeah.
But I still felt really comfortable in the environment.
That's great. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Lastly, as a freshman in high school, Mrs. Neva Ventula. Neva has been in chorus since fourth grade with me, and band, playing flute. She is heavily involved in MASTERS and done all the performances this year with the MASTERS program. She's been notorious after school. She's heavily involved in our performing arts department, so Neva?
Days in the Arts at Tanglewood give students unforgettable opportunities that continue to stay with each and every one of them and help shape their continued involvement in the arts programs. I was invited to attend DARTS the first week in my summer transition between fifth and sixth grade. As a fifth grader, my exposure to music and the arts was limited to the school programs, and little did I know what an important part that would continue to be in my life, even more so than already. Over the course of the week, each of the five days, we all had the opportunity to go on a field trip and experience the different interests that make up the arts. Each trip brought on a new inspiration and pushed me to continue to work hard. On Tuesday, we went to visit the Norman Rockwell Art Museum, and we were exposed to the beginnings of other forms of art opposed to just real-life portraits. On Wednesday, we went to a dance festival and watched an amazing dance performance that included many different types of dance. Also on Wednesday, we all took a dance class at the ever-famous Jacob's Pillow. This experience opened my eyes to how powerful dance can be and how differently it can be expressed. As repeated often, you don't have to be a dancer to get up and dance. On Thursday, we had a fun day at a nearby lake, and then I saw my first professional musical. We got amazing seats in a glorious theater and saw a funny thing happen on the way to the Forum. This production, being part of the Shakespeare Company, had a cast of only males. I think I can speak for all that it was definitely new and interesting, but a great cultural experience. Watching the musical was a great encouragement for me to start auditioning to be part of other musical productions, in which I continue to do throughout every year. On Friday, we had our last trip to the Boston Symphony Orchestra Hall to watch the BSO rehearse for an upcoming performance. Watching the orchestra rehearse opened up my eyes to greater opportunities. Not only did I want to work even harder at playing the flute with the band, but I began to become interested in learning other instruments, which now include piano, saxophone, and clarinet. As well as going on all these trips, we all took three classes each day. These classes were taught by music and English teachers brought in from all over Massachusetts. This allowed me to not only meet students who share the same love as me, but also adults who do it for a living. This gave me ideas of new ways to spread my love of music and put in the back of my mind that I could one day become a music teacher, or in a smaller sense, go back next year as a CIT, encouraging younger students to continue their participation in the arts programs inside and outside of school, as my CIT did for me. One of the classes I took was a voice class. This was the first time I'd ever experienced professional voice training and was exposed to many different genres of music. With limited students in the class, it gave us all a chance to build on our understanding of voice and singing with a group. This class led me to start taking professional private voice lessons, in which I am currently taking. Along with our chosen class, we also all were divided into creative writing classes. With the theme of the week, tragedy or comedy, each class made a group project based around the theme. My class made a song and rap. This class, again, taught us other parts of the arts and helped us interact with other students also attending the camp from North Reading District, and of course, other districts around Massachusetts. I made so many friends at DARTS. Some turned out to also be from North Reading. Some I left behind at camp. Others I have met up years later with, auditioning for the same musical. At the end of the week, we all got to do our favorite thing, perform. Each creative writing class performed what they had written. Each art, voice, dance, instrumental, and drama class performed, and then the annual Tanglewood Talent Show was put on. Through three-minute nightly showers, rubber ducky fun, llama jokes, campfire songs, crazy dance parties, morning routine room checks, and the continuous number roll call, seventy kids got to bond and learn and grow through a new educational look on the arts. I was thrilled when my sister was asked to attend the following year. Every time I put on my Days in the Arts at Tanglewood sweatshirt, I look on my desk at the rubber ducky I earned, the memories come floating back. My week there was unforgettable, along with the many people I met. I hope to be asked back next year as a CIT and help other students also have an unforgettable experience. The arts mean a lot to me, and Tanglewood has given me a new look on all of them.
Nav, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nav, are you excited about the new Performing Arts Theater at the high school next year?
Yeah.
You are? Okay, good. I hope you're not disappointed. Okay, thank you.
I think these students do a much better job speaking about DARTS than I do, and that's why I brought them along. It's an incredible experience. This year, because of Mother Nature, because I'll find someone to blame, Mother Nature, and our snow days, unfortunately, the camp now interferes with school, and so students will be missing two days, along with Mrs. Fisher, who has agreed to go along and teach the creative arts program, or creative writing program at the camp. So, we're here today to ask you to excuse these wonderful students from class, missing that day and a half, and also Ms. Fisher for this amazing experience.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion to approve the DARTS trip commencing June 23rd.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Inbriano, and a second by Ms. Araketti. Any further discussion? Again, thank you, Billy, Laura, and Nav, that was a great job. Hearing no further discussion, all who are favored, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries by vote of five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great time.
Thank you.
How can we? We're gonna be here at this meeting. Alright, thank you.
You might say good morning.
Next on the agenda is our school improvement plan for the elementary schools, and we have here tonight our elementary school principals, Mr. Colleen, Mr. McKay, and Ms. Molly. Mr. Colleen, of course, from the batch, and Mr. McKay from the hood, and Ms. Molly from the little school. So, the floor is yours.
Just gonna need a little transition moment.
Do we have clicker? I sure hope. I don't.
Jerry, do you know if there's any way to turn that fan on?
Yeah, we're, how do you turn it on?
I don't know.
It's getting sticky.
It would be nice.
Yeah?
Cindy, if you can find a way.
Huh?
I know.
It does. Selective probably shut it off, though. We can't turn it on.
There you go.
Ms. Molly?
Good evening. Christine Molly from the little school. Tonight, the elementary schools are here to present our school improvement plans. I believe you each have a copy of our plans. And tonight, we will present just a few highlights from this past year and a look ahead as we move to 2014, 2016.
I didn't say put it on super silent.
Holy, Matt, where the roof's gonna come out of there. The building will be lifting. You see that commercial of the guy who puts something on?
Oh, yeah. The ghost of Trilla's across.
That's good.
That's good. That's good. Geez, I was getting dizzy.
So, as in past years, low class size has always been our number-one priority. We believe that the single best way to provide a quality education is by maintaining a small class size. In North Reading, the target class sizes are for K to 2, less than twenty students, and for grades three to five, less than twenty-two students per class. For the 2014-2015 school year, we are happy to report that 100% of the classrooms at the batch, the hood, and the little school, with the exception of one or two of the kindergarten sections, will all meet the projected targets for class size.
Hello, I'm McKay from the hood school. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. We had spoke a lot last year about our alignment of goals and really focusing together. We had had goals that didn't align between the elementary schools when we really spent the year. Last year, focusing on aligning the goals under the frameworks that align with the evaluation system. So, we have teaching and learning, and our new teaching and learning, we focus on our math, our language arts, with a specific focus on meeting the needs of the high-need student population. And then, we have improved learning and growth for all students. The second goal focuses on management and operation. Third goal focuses on community and family engagement, and the last goal focuses on professional culture. So, this is a quote that we always, we always like to share. "A positive learning climate in school for young children is a composite of many things. It's an attitude that respects children. It's a place where children receive guidance and encouragement from all responsible adults around them. It's an environment where children can experiment and try out new ideas without fear of failure. It is an atmosphere that builds children's self-confidence, they dare to take risks. It's an environment that nurtures the love of learning." And that's what we're trying to do in our schools. So, we have our NRPS 2016, that's the District-Wide Continuous Improvement Plan. We have our Administrator Evaluation Standards, and we have the Educator Evaluation Standards, and we're trying to align all three of them in our school improvement plan, so that was the next big step for us. Just want to talk a little bit about my school, the hood school. We say it over and over again at the hood school, but hand-in-hand together, we can. And we really believe that if we work together with families, the school, the school council, and the school committee, we can meet the needs of all of our children and have great successes. There's some pictures there from our Rio Across America celebration. I just want to say a special thank you to the members that served on my school council. I had Mercedes Chiva, who is currently a second-grade teacher. I had Mr. Nick Jox, who is the community representative. He's an employee at Starbucks. Mrs. Lois Bisson, I'm the faculty representative. She was, she's our school nurse. I also had Mrs. Giaccoloni and Mrs. Daley as my parent representation, and I really appreciated all their input and feedback into the plan. So, just some highlights from the hood school. I know I hosted the school committee a couple weeks ago, and we talked a lot about the fourth one down, which was launching a co-teaching model across grade levels at the hood school. That was by far our biggest accomplishment of the year. But we also completed the implementation of the Common Core curriculum standards in math and English language arts. We really focused on utilizing a data-driven decision-making model. We implemented the No-Adam in grade five, and we were able to maintain our ninety minutes of uninterrupted literacy in grades one through five. We also spent a lot of time working on professional culture in the school, that fourth goal. We did various book studies, we had study groups, and we implemented a lot of internal changes to improve school climate. And we recently got some really favorable results on our MASTELD data that showed significant growth, so that's something we're very proud of at the hood school. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. McKay?
This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll see this slide gets repeated throughout, but each one of us kind of took a little different turn on the goals for next year. So, under teaching and learning, my goal is to reduce the proficiency gap in math and ELA by half for the year 2017, to continue to provide a safe learning environment for all stakeholders. Family and community engagement is always to improve school, family, and community partnerships through increased communication engagement. So, make sure you follow me on Twitter.
I do.
You actually tweeted, yes? And professional culture will be to strengthen professional learning community with a focus on shared responsibility to improve student learning. And that shared responsibility piece goes into the co-teaching model, as well as just that hand-in-hand together we can. We want to understand that, you know, results are responsible for grades K to five at the hood school. So, just because an assessment's conducted in a certain grade level reflects how the whole school has handled that child all the way through the process.
Thank you.
There was a day when you could read that, Mr. McKay. That's what I do now, is just type smaller, so nobody can read it.
You can tell he's a veteran.
I appreciate the time. We're very fortunate, Mr. McKay, Ms. Molly, and myself have been able to find time over the course of the year to continue to focus on our school goals as related to teaching and learning. And especially this year, implementing the new educator evaluation, was a good time to be able to have somebody to talk about, because as the elementary school principal, you don't have a lot of idea to step bounce off. So, we were able to find some good time to help us support each other, so I'm thankful for their input this year. Next slide. I want to thank my school council, which is Tabitha Hydorn is my faculty rep, Tina Bork is a faculty rep and secretary, parent representative Julie Brady served as co-chair, Carol Smith's a parent representative, and Betty Green is my community representative, although I will be looking for a new community representative. So, if anybody from Dunkin' Donuts or somebody that can bring coffee to my school council meetings, feel free to contest. It is, it was brilliant. Next slide. The LD Bachelor School, similar. Last year, we really took a jointed approach to setting goals, so with the No-Adam science curriculum, to make sure all students in all three elementary schools now in grades three to five have very similar curriculum experience in science. Thank you to the school committee and the superintendent and Michael Connolly for helping us with the budget dilemma that that did put on us, but it's been great for our students. We will begin to look at those new standards that will be released to make sure we're aligned, and also start to look at what we're doing with our K to two students as far as science instruction. Supported professional development and our professionals transition to the state's new educator evaluation system. It took a lot of work from our teachers, as well as the administration, to get comfortable with setting goals that could be measured and provide them detailed feedback about their performance. We were able to purchase a mobile iPad cart with ten iPads, which can move from classroom to classroom. We have the larger thirty iPad cart that is part of the iPad Initiative Program. We've got a smaller version that's able to move a little bit more easily and on-demand, that you plug the wireless with it. So, the teachers who are involved in the initiative have the opportunity to use that in their classroom with students. We continue to work as a school-wide data team, coming off of our training from the year before, looking at surveys to better understand some of the perceptual data that may be available, and use that information to help us establish our professional practice and student learning goals. Like at the hood school, we do, we've been spending a lot of time trying to create a professional culture that we're able to talk about our practice and its impact on student learning, through book studies, our norms of collaboration. We're spending a lot more time meeting, looking at student work, and calibrating the lens of what product looks like. And then, we continue to work on our Common Language Response to Intervention. We just, as far as tiered learning in our schools, to progress monitor, make sure all students are learning at all levels. For 2014-15, we'll continue to work on the proficiency gap in math and ELA as aligned by the NRPS 2016. And management and operations, we want to have a safe school that gives every child the opportunity to learn. We want to continue to improve our school and family and community partnerships, which are pretty strong, but we're always trying to make them a little bit stronger. And like I said, the professional learning community with a professional culture will be something that we'll continue to focus on. After that, back to Ms. Molly.
Thank you.
So, at the little school, that's a picture from the International Day of Peace, where we gathered the children out in the field to make the peace sign. And some of the words from our vision or mission statement are, "Creating a challenging environment with high expectations. Creating a safe and nurturing environment for learning and play. And learning to respect ourselves and one another." So, next slide. I'd like to also take a moment to thank the representatives on the little school council. Nancy Bedavas, a fifth-grade teacher, is my co-chair. Beth Brown, a second-grade teacher at the school, is the secretary. Phil Lynch is a third-grade teacher in the building. Mr. Mark Fisher is a parent representative. Jill Janisiewicz is a parent representative, and Tom Magna is also a parent representative. And we, too, are also looking for a community rep, so if you know anybody in the little school district that would like to donate their time, please send them our way. Some of the highlights from this current year, 2013, 2014, are very similar to the hood and the batch elder schools. We implemented the No-Adam science curriculum in grade five. We were able to install two new smart boards in classrooms. We have only one classroom left now at the little school without a smart board. Fifty percent of our professional staff has completed the first year of the new educator evaluation system. We completed the implementation of the Common Core curriculum standards in math and English language arts. We were able to install two new smart boards in classrooms. We have only one classroom left now at the Little School without a smart board. Fifty percent of our professional staff has completed the first year of the new educator evaluation system. We completed the implementation of the Common Core Curriculum Standards in math and English Language Arts. We have increased our instructional technology activities in grades K to five with the help of the digital learning specialist. And we have facilitated a number of professional developments within the Little School facilitated by our own staff members, which include book studies in various areas of education. And this summer, we'll also be sending another team to the co-teaching training. And very similar to my friends to my right, for 2014-2015, our goals and initiatives will continue more of the same work we did in 2013-2014, and for teaching and learning is to reduce the proficiency gap in math and English Language Arts in half by the year 2017, and to strengthen the instructional program, health and safety of the learning environment, to improve the school, family, and school community partnership, to strengthen the academic and social programs, and for professional culture, to strengthen the professional learning community with a focus on improved student learning. And I think the biggest highlight for the school for this coming year is that we have actually begun a discussion and some preparation for looking into building a new playground out in the back of the Little School, so we will be working in conjunction with the PTO to do that very soon, forming a committee and looking into space and all of that kind of stuff. So it's very exciting for the families at the Little School who have very much wanted a new playground for a very long time, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have anything more to add?
No, I'm just very pleased with the work that's sitting in place across our elementary schools. This notion of alignment can't be understated. It's very important to have a coherent curriculum based on curriculum standards. And so, the work that's taken place over the course of the last 16 years, when the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks came into being, really is coming to fruition in the classrooms. We can see improvements, students are actively engaged in their learning. Engagement, we know, is key. And I applaud the leadership of the building principals, as well as the way that they use their curriculum leaders throughout the building, because it takes many people to make this work effective. And I think that the building principals have done a fine job in operationalizing what needs to take place in a school improvement plan and making it real for our students. And that's why we're all here, is to make it a better place for our students. So I applaud their work.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mel?
Kathy, I'm assuming that all three schools we've aligned with Common Core and math and ELA?
Across the district.
Anyone else?
I'm always impressed when I have the opportunity to look through the improvement plans, how the community and all of the representatives get together and they really make a great cohesive document that allows us to see what is going on in each school. So it's impressive, and I want to just acknowledge that. I did have one question about the No-Adam. I know that you guys have all implemented. Do you have any sort of anecdotes or experiences from the process of implementing it, how students have perceived it, you know, any feedback about it, since it was a huge investment for our district?
The student engagement level is very high, and I think that was one of the driving forces of why our teachers really felt it was something that we needed to continue after the third grade implementation, the cost that was associated with that. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to sustain it. The feedback from the teachers and communication with the students and what they observed really put that into place. The work that has gone on over that time being of going from the STC kits, which was more by trimester or quarter, to unit-based instruction with a little more inquiry to make sure, especially for fifth grade this year, I don't know, because they still have the MCAS science test, so they were a little concerned. They had their curriculum lined up to make sure the students were most prepared, so they had a little bit more work involved, but I think all in all, the reports were very positive.
I'd say the hands-on component of it promotes that engagement piece, and the fact that the children have to take those home and they really get to demonstrate at home what they learn, and just the fact that you get to make something in class on a consistent basis with the program, and the kids love that hands-on piece, and the teachers really promote the engagement of it. They say it's just not rival.
I think this year, more than ever, in meetings with parents and students, talking to students, I have heard more from students that science is their favorite subject than I've ever heard before. So I think that's a testament to the curriculum itself, because it really is hands-on, and it's, the kids really, really enjoy it. I know it's a lot of work for the teachers, and it's a lot of, you know, preparation and work, but the kids really get a lot out of it.
It's great to hear.
Kathy?
Very often at the elementary level, you'll hear that there isn't enough time to be teaching science and social studies. And I really applaud the educators at the elementary level in this school district. They recognize the importance of teaching those content areas, and not only do they recognize that, but they went after a program that requires more work on the part of the educator to prepare opportunities for learning for our students. And when I've observed it in the schools, I see nothing but engagement, not only of our students, but of our educators. So I wasn't completely, because of the cost, I was nervous initially when I first came here, but now I'm pretty sold.
I think we were all nervous about the cost, but I'm glad to hear there's a return on investment.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Well, again, thank you, Mr. Kling, Mr. McKay, and Ms. Molly. Appreciate it, good job.
We do need to vote on...
Yeah, we're going to vote on accepting, I'm sorry, vote on accepting the improvement plans. I need a motion for that?
Move to accept the improvement plans for all three schools.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bowers, and a second by Ms. EriKetty. Is there any further discussion? Herring, none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries by vote of five to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you again, guys. Are you waiting for Mr. Daley?
We can...
We can move back on the agenda, or I mean, you need him for the next presentation?
Right. He should be here momentarily. We went a little faster than we had originally thought.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Nothing wrong with that, at all.
Nothing wrong with that.
We knew you weren't doing it yet.
I know. I'm not either. Thank you, though, for your consideration. I'll remember that. The MSBA Secondary School Building Committee update on the secondary school building project. I'd ask the superintendent, did you have anything? I know we haven't...
We haven't had a meeting since the last school committee meeting that was held, so we provided an update at that time. I know that there was a construction meeting last Thursday, so I'm not sure if you or Mr. Bowers or Mrs. Embriano have information you'd like to share.
And we do have a meeting tomorrow night, by the way, at 5:30 PM at the high school modular cafeteria. Janina Cliff, anything you wanted to report regarding the progress at the buildings since the last time we met?
Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead, because I didn't make...
Gymnasium floor is going down. Just the subfloor sleepers are going down, the subfloor on that, the rest of the hardwood floor that we're going up with is acclimating. Let's see, the dance platform in the auditorium, the working platform, they've been doing all of that hardwood from, is, was, last Thursday was about, oh, about a little more than a third down. Gives you the true perspective of what the thing looks like at this point. Lockers are going in. Everyone will be happy to know the lockers are all wide enough so you can back up and drop your backpack in there.
You could even stuff a freshman in there.
You could actually put a freshman in there.
You could, yeah.
We don't do that.
We don't do that, no.
The floors are down. The actual discussion was about the cleaning of the classrooms at this point. So when you get into the cleanup after construction, you're working pretty far down the line.
Yeah, it's progressing. I mean, it's a lot of, really, it's finished work, and we only have 91 days until the first day of school, so things have to move quickly between now and September 8th, which is the first day of school, but there's a lot of work for the administrators to do. I mean, they have to do a lot of packing and moving. The middle school beginning out in, what, Kathy, June 24th?
June 24th.
And almost immediately, they're going to be packing, moving, getting everything down to the high school for next year, and then they'll be coming in to start working on the middle school. So it's, we're on a tight schedule, but I think we're on schedule, so, thank you. Policy manual. We have a second reading on policy KGA, KGA-R, which are the regulations for that policy. And this has to do with the use of school buildings and grounds, and a lot of it's in anticipation of the new school coming online. So I'm going to turn this over to Cliff. I think you were primary drafter.
This is the second reading, and if anybody has any comments on it...
I actually found some things that I probably should have found last week.
Go ahead, Mel.
Under the facility user fee schedule...
Page nine.
Page nine, there's a charge for locker rooms at the old high school, but I don't see anything for locker rooms at the new high school. So I'm wondering, are we charging a separate fee for locker rooms at the new high school, or is that going to come as part of the gym package?
Cliff, what was your intent on that?
Locker rooms?
It says locker rooms, old high school.
I think the intent was that there would not be, there would not be space that would be rented in the new high school the first year.
Okay, all right. The other two, it looks like, a couple of things. We have, under large common space, we have auditoriums, audio use, auditoriums, lightboard use. Then under other charges, we have lightboard sound, AV media equipment. So it sounds like the same thing, but we have different fees for those.
Let me provide some clarity. The other charges is meant to be when a technician is required.
Okay.
A trained technician, it's a $50 per...
So that probably should be written.
Prevent.
We probably could have put in the staff.
Yeah. Staff technician.
I think it provides the right clarity.
And I guess the last thing is, on the hourly rates, we say, for example, Gym Elementary School, $20 for a four-hour minimum. I mean, do we need that for, it's $20 to rent an elementary school gym, whether they use it for one hour or...
Correct.
Ten hours, right?
That's correct. Well, if it goes on beyond four hours, then you...
But that says a four-hour minimum. So to me, if I'm reading that, I could rent it for 25 hours, and it would still be $20, because, so four-hour minimum, that's the point I'm getting at. That doesn't, I think, convey the message we want, that doesn't convey what we want to convey at all.
We're just suggesting, offer modifying that, $20 for four hours.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's, yeah, $20 for four hours. Not minimum, it's just for four hours, right? Because they can rent it for an hour if they want, correct?
That's correct, so...
So I think the minimum probably should go for...
I think, yeah, but I think what, like I was trying to say, though, too, is if you rent it for one hour or four hours, it's $20?
It's the same rate.
If you want to modify it, it's $40.
Right, correct, right. So it's in a four-hour increment.
That's what we're trying to convey, Mel. In other words, it's one hour, two hours, three hours, four hours.
Right, but four-hour minimum doesn't convey that.
Okay, yeah.
Four-hour...
Four-hour minimum says, to me, that says you have to rent it for four hours for $20. It should say $20, one to four hours, $20 for each four-hour increment or something like that.
Four-hour.
Can I make a recommendation, make this clearer?
Go ahead.
Just take the four-hour minimum out of the hourly rates, list the hourly rates, and then denote with an asterisk or something as a footnote, what has a four-hour minimum, what has a two-hour minimum, what doesn't have a minimum? Or a second column.
But that's confusing, because it's not an hourly rate. That's why it's confusing.
Right, it's not an hourly rate.
Yeah.
If it was an hourly rate, it'd be $5 for the hour, based on what it's saying here, and it's not. It's $20 if you rent the gym from one minute to four hours, that's what we're trying to convey.
I totally get that.
So we can deal with the $20 issue by saying $5 with a four-hour minimum.
No, that...
Well, you could do that. I mean, that's $5 an hour with a four-hour minimum, but...
Mr. Venetia?
I think it's, yeah, I'm sorry.
I think, I mean, I think to clarify, you could just, instead of saying four-hour minimum, you just say up to four hours, or within four-hour increments.
Right.
Up to four hours.
Up to four hours, we clarify it.
Right, for all of these.
Then I think it's clear.
And do that all the way down.
For all the ones that say hour minimum, you should say up to.
Yep.
That makes it, I think, much more clear. Has everybody had a chance to look at these? For the audience, what we're doing here is we're taking something we already had, and that's a fee schedule for the use of school facilities, and we're just trying to update it based on the opening of a new facility. Not a lot has changed, really.
Yep, it just, you know, we're really documenting what our past practice has been in one comprehensive...
Jerry, I just want to recommend again that, whether it be in person, that there be some sort of orientation for local groups in North Reading, because while we've been using a lot of these regulations, they haven't been codified. They've been kind of...
Right.
Whoever gets the phone that day tells them what the rules are. So I think we ought to orient local groups to...
I think it's a good idea, Mike, I mean, particularly for, you know, groups are going to use it extensively, like use basketball and volleyball, things like that.
We'll reach out to all our study users that have rented in the past, and write to them and ask them to have an orientation meeting.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, with the one change, up to the minimum, any other...
Well, we're going to add that word, too, staff, staffing on the, yeah, lightboard sound, AV media equipment, staff.
Okay, anything further? Anybody needs to add or amend? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve on second reading the use of North Reading Public School Buildings and Grounds, policy KGA, and regulations.
And regulations attached.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. EriKetty, and a second by Mr. Bowers. Cliff, thank you. It's a lot of work on this, Cliff and Mike, I think, right? And Janine?
Janine.
Thank you, it's a lot of work. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Herring, none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries by vote of five to nothing. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to move again, and we have, Mr. Daley is here, and we're going to ask him to do the presentation on the Shell Plaid English Immersion Program. Patrick?
Thank you.
Do you need more time, Patrick, or you don't have?
Just a minute to set up.
Okay.
And then you're going to go, you're going to write in half the park and pass out that.
Yeah, that's next, yeah. And then, just so everybody knows in the audience, the next presentation will be the PAC versus the MCAS. I know that's why you're all...
Did you have a...
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we do the appointments of the board of directors? Pat, take the time, we're doing that. We're just going to jump ahead to something else. Go to number six on the agenda for new business, and that's the appointment of the board of directors of the education collaboratives. Kathy, you want to expand on that, which collaboratives we're talking about?
Sure, sure. There is legislation that came into being this particular school year regarding the education collaboratives in the state of Massachusetts. And this new legislation mandates the following, that one voting member is annually appointed by each member school committee from among its membership, and a school committee may appoint its superintendent, the superintendent... The appointment must be made each year before July 1. So the North Reading School District is a member of two education collaboratives, and appointments must be made for each one. We belong to the SEEM education collaborative, and we belong to the North Shore Education Consortium. And I serve currently on both boards, and I recommend that this superintendent continue to do so. I would suggest that if that's the pleasure of the board, that the recommendation read the superintendent serves as opposed to me.
Well, that was my question, will we have to redo this?
No, as long as you identify the superintendent as the representative.
As a designee of the.
That's correct.
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint the superintendent of North Reading Schools to serve on the SEEM and.
North Shore.
No, North Shore.
Two separate votes. They have to be reflected in the minutes as two separate votes.
Okay, let's do SEEM first.
I move to appoint the superintendent of North Reading Schools to serve on the SEEM Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Webster, and a close call, but I'm going to give a second to Mr. Bowers on the motion to appoint superintendent of schools as the representative of SEEM collaborative. Any further discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. If I may, Jeff Yu of North Reading, it says on here northeast, is there a difference between northeast and North Shore?
It should say North Shore.
Just to point a.
North Shore Education Consortium.
I see on the agenda.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Yu.
It's on the agenda.
So we have, we have the motion right now for SEEM, okay? And we have no further discussion. So all is in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to nothing. And then, Mr. Webster, the second motion is for the North Shore Education Collaborative.
Move to appoint the superintendent of North Reading Schools to serve on the Board of Directors, the North Shore Education Consortium.
Okay, we have a second. Motion by Mr. Webster, a second by Mr. Bowers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to nothing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Patrick, you all set?
I am. Sorry for the delay.
That's all right.
I left my photocopies in the office and I went back for them. The first presentation is about Retail and SEI Endorsement. This is a presentation I've been going around to the different schools with Mark Rogani, who's the president of the NREA. We've been co-presenting this to all the schools in the district. We've hit four of the five schools. We haven't hit the little school yet that's scheduled in the coming weeks. This actually doesn't really affect the little school quite as much as some of the others, so that's working out fine for us. So I've mentioned this to you a little bit in the past, but this is just an overview of what this, what this is all about. So just a couple of terms that we're going to use during this presentation. ELL is English Language Learners. Formerly, the term was ESL. You may be familiar with that. It still refers to the name of the program and the name of the teacher, ESL teacher. Retail is the name of the initiative, so it's the Rethinking Equity in Teaching for English Language Learning. This is the initiative in the state of Massachusetts. Sheltered English Immersion is SEI, you'll then refer to SEI. And the SEI endorsement, which I refer to, is a required DESE endorsement for all teachers with one ELL student and any administrator who evaluates this teacher. At this time, there's no charge to apply for the SEI endorsement. I'm just going to mention these two terms tonight. This is WEDA, which is the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. These are the standards, so just like we have math standards and ELA standards, for ELL students, there are standards called WEDA, and they replace what was called the ELPO standards in the past. Access is the assessment for ELL students. This replaces the MEPA assessment. Just a brief history, in 2002, you may recall a ballot initiative in Massachusetts that talked about bilingual education, and the voters said that they didn't want students to be educated in two languages or in their native language, that all students must be taught in English. What that ballot initiative brought forth is now we have a lot of students who don't speak English, who now classroom teachers have in their classrooms, and they have to speak to them in English. And so along with that, there was a, there was a call for an increased training for all of the classroom teachers to learn how to work with students whose first language is not English. However, what we saw in Massachusetts was an increased ELA dropout rate. We saw an increase in sped referrals. Teachers who weren't, and administration that were not ready to address the issues of English Language Learners assumed incorrectly that these students had special education learning disabilities. And so we saw an increase in those referrals. And they did create these category trainings, one through four, for students. We did not see enough of those, and there was no kind of accountability or mandate for those. So the Department of Justice came in and slapped the state of Massachusetts on this, on the wrist for this. This, there are many, many initiatives out there that are coming, as many different, we'll be talking about Common Core and PARC and all these things that are coming down the pike. This is a little bit different in that this is coming from the Department of Justice. So for this definition, a core academic teacher is a teacher of elementary school, a teacher of moderate and severe disabilities, and a teacher of the following subjects: English, reading, language arts, mathematics, science, civics, and government, economics, history, and geography. Slightly different than highly qualified definition, but this is the definition of core academic teachers. An SEI teacher is any teacher, any core academic teacher who we just named, who has one or more ELL students in her classroom. For this, addressing how we're going to get SEI teachers trained, Massachusetts had to come up with a system. They came up with three cohorts. North Reading is in Cohort Three in 2014, 15, and 2015, 16. There are already many other districts. Cohort One were your large urban districts with a high number of ELL students. Cohort Two were your medium sized districts, and North Reading is a low incidence district. We only have currently eight ELL students in our district. We are in a Cohort Three. Being a Cohort Three district, it's interesting because in some ways, it seems like it should be less of a concern or a question in our district because we have such a low number. But it's also very complicated, because a lot of the rules don't, aren't going to touch everyone. Whereas in some districts, they have, when I taught in Wolfheim, I always had two or three ELL students every year, so it was a front burner issue. In North Reading, there's a very good chance that someone might not have an ELL student. And so it's a little bit more complicated in our small, in a district such as ours. The first thing that I, we're making sure all the teachers understand is that if you're, if you have a preliminary license and you're going for an initial license as a principal or a teacher, you will need, by this July, you will need this SEI endorsement to meet those requirements. So whether you have a student or not, you have to get this ELL endorsement. Now, many of the programs that are out there for teacher training are all giving, now, they're working this into their curriculum in the undergraduate programs. So this affects teachers in our district. There's not many teachers in our district who are in this category, yes.
Let me ask you a question on that.
Sure.
So if they're required to get this endorsement prior to getting the teaching license, is the cost going to eventually be on them for whatever that, like that endorsement costs before they become a teacher?
It is. For these folks, the cost is on them because it's not related to whether they have a student in their classroom. It's tied into their licensure. So for folks with preliminary licensure, which is basically, preliminary licensure is usually a job changer, or someone who goes to an undergraduate major that is not education, and they come into the field, they have to take an MTEL test, and basically, within five years, they have to show that they've received all of the pedagogy instruction that they need. And so tagged onto that now is this SEI endorsement. So we've worked closely to identify these folks in our district. For all core academic teachers who we defined earlier, the rule is really for July 1, 2016, if they have an ELL student in their classroom, they have one year to obtain this SEI endorsement. So it's a requirement, if you have a student in your classroom, that you must earn this endorsement. And there's a few ways to get the endorsement, which we'll talk about in a few moments. Same thing for July 1, 2016, when you go to relicense, if you are a principal or assistant principal or supervisor director who supervises or evaluates any core academic teacher who provides SEI to one or more students, you must have the SEI administrator endorsement. So this affects just about every administrator in this district in one way or another. For all teachers, and if you see up here, this is the nurse, I've talked to Michael, school business administrator, guidance counselors, it affects everyone in the district who has a license. You will need to earn at least 15 professional development points in Sheltered English Immersion, and at least 15 professional development points in special education also. So right now, educators have to earn 150 PDPs to relicense, 90 of those in content. Within that content area is also going to be these 15 PDPs. These are things that we're going to offer on campus for free of charge to people. We're going to be offering three hours a year in each of these areas. This will be a positive thing. Teachers are clamoring for more differentiation and more special education professional development anyway. This just holds them, holds us accountable. So for some, it's going to kick in a little bit sooner. For others, we're going to start offering it this year, so by the end of their five years, they'll be all set with the 15.
So are they now required to earn 165 credits, or is it still 150?
Still the 150. It's just now they have to focus, they have to be able to identify that they were in these target areas as well.
They're diversified.
So they have some electives, and then they have some in content. They're going to really focus in those areas.
Sure.
And so this is something we're already addressing with some of our PD for next year. Again, we have, at this moment, we have eight total ELL students for next year, so I'm rolling students forward a grade. There's two things to keep in mind here as we roll forward a grade. One is, students may move in and out. And number two, students may be ELL, but after time, they will now, they will become former ELL students if we feel that they have worked into the, into the regular education curriculum. But right now, we have a grade two student at the bachelor, a grade four student at the bachelor, a grade three student at the hood, a grade four student at the hood, two students at grade nine, and one student in grade 10. And then for 15, 16, we're rolling those students forward. So just very quickly, the way they did the math, they took, they looked at the number of students, at the time, there were five students, I'm sorry, there were, there were seven students. Those seven students had five teachers because they were spread out, I'm sorry, those students had 10 teachers because they either had an individual teacher or they're on one team at the middle school. So it was the same four teachers. They looked at that number 10, and they said, we're going to give you two years to get there, we're going to give you five seats, five teachers this year, five teachers next year. They didn't take into account the fact that students move forward and have a new teacher every year, and that a student in the high school might have many different teachers. And those three students are not necessarily going to have all the same English teacher, all the same math teacher. So we applied for as many as 24 to 26 seats. They gave us six. And I'll explain what the seats is. So this is where that's going. So here's, here's what this means for North Reading educators. Any educator with an ELL student in her class will need the endorsement within two years of that placement. Educators can become endorsed by taking a course in the fall or the spring, or passing a new test, the SEI MTEL. We're going to offer training, I'm sorry, the Department of Ed offers training free of charge. In July, we're going to have information about this. North Reading is too small, we're not able to offer the training in district, but some neighboring districts, Tuck Spray has contacted us, Wakefield, they will be offering courses. So right now, they're kind of scrambling to get their courses lined up. In July, we're going to notify the teachers who have a student in class, and they're going to log into a portal to sign up for the class on a first come, first served basis. One of the important parts is that any educator enrolled in the course must have an ELL student in class during the course. So if you have a student in your classroom in July, and that student moves to a different classroom or moves from North Reading, you would not be able to start that course in the fall, or if that happens mid-year and you enroll for the spring. Part of the assignment and the way the course is structured, you have to have a student in class in front of you. Again, administrators who evaluate these teachers must have to take the course over the next two years. Volunteers, we're asking for volunteers. So some teachers have come forward and said, I'd like to have a student in my class. Some of these teachers have worked in other districts, and they've been certified and been trained, and so they've, we've asked for some volunteers to come forward. We will notify others in July. Again, if they do not have an ELL student in their class, they will need those 15 PDPs in a five year cycle, and we're going to be providing those requirements, those opportunities for the PD. So here's the course. This is, they're giving us six free seats in a course. It's an intensive course, it's research based, you will get instructional strategies for ELL students, you earn 67.5 PDPs, which is the equivalent of a three credit graduate course. You would earn, officially earn, the SEI endorsement if you successfully completed the course. We would offer North Reading credits as compensation for the graduate credits, so they can move on the salary scale when they accumulate a certain number of credits. And it's paid for, for the Department of Ed during the first two years. So we're trying to explain to folks that if you are interested and you think that this may affect you, you may want to volunteer, you may want to be a person who takes part in this course. It is paid for by the state during those first two years. There are some other options. The other options would be to take the MTEL test for SEI. At this time, there is a cost to the educator and the administrator. It's about $185, I believe, for the whole process to take the test. The downside of the test is you're not guaranteed to pass. Obviously, you can study for it, but you're not guaranteed to get the endorsement. If you hold an ESL license, you would be all set. We do have one teacher who is our ESL teacher who is licensed. If you have completed the trainings that were offered in the past 10 years, categories one, two, and four, not a combination of the both of any of them, it's one, two, and four, and we do not have anyone that has done that. They will be able to complete courses in the future, there is a cost to the educator in the future. We don't know what that cost would be, it's an out of pocket cost. They have linked this to licensure, and they say this is a professional responsibility. So technically, without having this information, if you have a student in your class in three years, or if you have a student in your class in the next two years and you don't take this free option, you would have to pay out of pocket for it in order to be relicensed. Finally, if you possess a bachelor's degree in approved major, which I believe is linguistics is the one that they're looking at, they would consider you for an endorsement. We talked about that a few times. So one thing we're trying to do here, we're saying, you know, we'd be proactive, if folks want to try to take the MTEL, avoid the 45 hour course, if that doesn't seem like it fits their schedule, they can, we're going to do a study group with our Barbara Fitzgeralds, who is our ESL teacher. She's going to lead a study group, there is a study guide, and they would prepare and follow some study materials in order to take the upcoming MTEL. Again, there is a cost out of pocket for educators for this route, and also is not a guarantee that you would receive the endorsement. But some people want to take a chance at that, others are going to volunteer and have a student in their classroom, and some others feel this may not affect them because there's a limited number of students. Questions?
Thank you, Patrick. Kathy, do you want to add anything before the questions?
No, I just want to point out to the school committee that this qualifies as professional development. When we have conversations about professional development for school committee, this is one of those areas that I tell you, you participate in all the time.
This even allows them to advance on the salary schedule, depending on how many.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions?
No, it's very thorough.
No? Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Yes, massive. Sure you can.
Can I understand you to say that any educator with an ELL student currently in the class must take the course within one year, is that?
Two years.
Any student with an ELL student in their class starting next year.
Yeah.
Has to take, has to receive the endorsement within two years.
But what I need to understand a little bit is, so the student then could move on, as you've shown, to fourth grade, tenth grade, and not be in the class the next year, so why, during the time that ELL student is in the class, they don't have the endorsement, but then they get an ELL student.
Yeah. It seems a little, I was making that a little convoluted, to say the least.
This is, this is one of those pieces that does not make a lot of sense in a lowest in this district. In another district, it's assumed that you were going to be getting students every year, and you sort of become the trained teacher. You've had a student, you can either take the course that year or the next year, and then you would be the person who would be receiving students coming forward.
And you have to have the student to take the class, so you couldn't object, oh, next year, the student's going to be in my fourth grade, and we'll put it in this teacher's, what is the student in this teacher's class who's going to, who's going to be trained when the student enters the class, so with the, okay, I know you don't make the rules.
No, it's a very, it's a very, very complicated.
I hope he's not making the rules, Cassie.
It's a very complicated situation. And it's, you know, again, they've only given us six seats. So it, they're going to increase the number of seats in year two, depending on how many teachers we have in year one that actually have a student in class. But we do, you know, there is an advantage, taking advantage of those free seats that are paid for. So it, they're going to increase the number of seats in year two depending on how many teachers we have in year one that actually have a student in class. But we do, you know, there is an advantage to taking advantage of those free seats that are paid for. So we, we actually did have, I would say we've probably got about five volunteers. A few of those were before we made the presentation, so I don't know whether they've changed their mind. But we, we have some volunteers who are interested in this, see this as an area of professional growth and like the idea that the department's going to foot the bill in these first two years. So I think we will have volunteers for those seats.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Now we're going to move on to the question, I think, that most of the people in the audience fought tonight, the PARK versus the MCAS testing. And Patrick's going to make that presentation as well. When he's done, we will open it up for discussion for not only the committee members, but certainly for members of the audience as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I think we're all aware, this is a very topical issue. And we've done quite a bit of thought and discussion about this at the administrative level and at the teacher level throughout North Reading. So I'm going to talk tonight about what is before us, explain what's been presented to us from the Department of Education, and then finally get to what the Administrative Council is suggesting for North Reading for 2014, 15. This first graphic just shows the PARK test drive. Some of these slides, you'll be able to tell there's a little star in the corner. We've pulled these in from some presentations that I've been to with the superintendent and with the administrators. We've, we've been to several trainings and we had a webinar call-in with the Department of Ed. So we're sharing those slides with you as well. As you can see, in 2013, we decided to do a two-year test drive. This year, we are doing our pilot test. And then there is a place in between March and June where we will be deciding, making a decision about what we're going to do for next year. We have between June and October to choose PARK or MCAS. In 2015, the operational PARK and MCAS testing, so both tests are given as an option for next year. In the fall of 2015, the Board of Secondary Edu, Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is going to vote to decide whether to adopt PARK. In 2016, PARK is implemented or a transition begins to another next-generation assessment. So they're going to, they've done a field test this year and as you're aware, we've done some double testing throughout the state. Some students took MCAS, some took PARK, some took both. Next year, they're giving districts the option, stay with MCAS for one more year or move on to PARK. And then they're going to use the data that they collect from there to make a presentation to the Board of Education very late, in the fall of 2015, with a, with a airtight decision being made for the testing in 2016. So these are the questions we have to answer on June 30th. We have to write to the Department of Education. Here are the questions that we're looking at. Will North Reading administer MCAS or PARK in 2014, 15 for grades three to eight in both ELA and mathematics? And then if North Reading chooses PARK, we have to consider, will students in the eighth grade take the Algebra I test? Will North Reading administer PARK in grades nine or 11? And there's some flexibility there with, you can choose either math, ELA in either grade or in either nine or 11. And finally, will the district administer computer-based or paper-based tests? This graphic's a little hard to read, but this just is another breakdown of the timelines. So again, we've been doing these conference calls, we've been sitting in those. By June 30th is our first deadline. Now, if we make a decision, if we, if we say PARK, by June 30th, we're guaranteed to go with PARK. We're guaranteed to have the support for the testing materials. There is an increased cost in one year at the state level because they are entertaining two tests. So they can't guarantee that everybody can get their first choice. So they're going to cut us off at June 30th. If a district doesn't choose by June 30th or by October, they would default and take the current MCAS assessment. During July, they will offer some trainings over, over the summer. There'll be discussion. By October 1st is the last day that we have to choose. So districts would now, districts that didn't do an early decision in June would have to commit by October. We also have until October 31st for the final decision about whether we're going to do online or paper and pencil. The paper and pencil decision can be school-based. The PARK versus MCAS decision needs to be a district-wide decision. There are, there is some flexibility. The nine and 11 decision at the high school can be separate and distinct from the three to the eight. And I'll say this a few times throughout, but the current MCAS for 10th grade students as the determination for graduation, the competency determination continues through the class to 2018. Our current eighth graders will continue to take that. So at least two more years of current MCAS as the graduation requirement in 10th grade. As you can see, in the future, in the winter and the spring, are more PARK and MCAS trainings and test administrations. The test administrations for paper and pencil are listed there below and the administration window for the computer-based testing is listed as well. Just a reminder, the way this works is that, I'll speak to it here. This year, we did our field test at two schools. We did mathematics in grade three at the Little and grade five at the Bachelor. The way the PARK assessment works, if you recall, there are two assessments. There's a project-based assessment, which is in the March-April window. And then there are end-of-year assessments, which is in the late May-June window. So right now, we take ELA in the early part of the year and math at the later part of the year. It's different with PARK. You're going to be doing both early and both late. The project-based assessments, if you recall, are the more open-ended written responses for both ELA and math. They take a little bit longer to assess. The multiple-choice and shorter answer questions would be in the end of year. The goal of all of this computerized testing and all of this testing and doing these two windows is to get us data. This won't happen in 2015, but they're saying by the next year, they would have us the end-of-year data. By June or early July, we'd be able to have all of that data from the test. Right now, we have to wait until the following fall to get our results back.
Can you be more specific about the 2016, 2015? What were we talking about?
For, for, they're saying that the, not this year, but next year, that we should be able to have some data by the end of the school year. That's, that's what they're projecting. But that won't be the case for 2015.
Gotcha. Thank you.
At the two schools, we, we tested four classrooms, two third-grade and two fifth-grade classrooms. We utilized our computer labs and also Chromebooks. And we had a great representation. I have to give a shout-out to my technology staff. As I've mentioned to you here before, it took, we were all on-site for four days at, at the school just this last week, all day long. I was there and Nicholas, Nan, Caleb were there, working out any issues that would happen with our computer labs. North Reading was chosen as a computer-based testing site. Other districts did only the paper-based test. So the major considerations, and we need to keep this in mind for tonight and to help us frame our discussion. There's a lot of political thought out there about what is going on with Common Core, what is going on with PARK. This decision before us is not truly about whether Common Core is what's best for students. It's not about whether PARK versus current MCAS. It's PARK versus current MCAS for one year. Because the MCAS is changing. No matter what, what we're being told is that MCAS is going to be different. There's only one more year of the current MCAS test. The year after that, it's either going to be PARK. It's going to be a new test that they've said as much as it could just be PARK with a different name. It also could be a new MCAS test that needs to be then field-tested and we're back into the cycle we're in this year where we're doing double testing again, where some are taking MCAS, some are taking, I'll call it MCAS plus. So MCAS is changing no matter what. This decision before us tonight is about what we're doing for one year. They do need a sample group. And I'm going to get into how we're going to link and how we're going to show growth and how we're going to show accountability. They need a sample group of about 15% of districts to take MCAS this year so that they can make those links. From where I stand, that's one of the only reasons why they're even allowing this choice. They're really, the, the sense that I have is that PARK or something else is absolutely coming next. The argument to be made is that students and educators will have a head start on experiencing next-generation assessments. Districts that are choosing MCAS are saying, "We're not ready to change. We're not in a place to change." We're going to talk about whether North Reading is ready to change and get a head start with students and teachers having a clear direction of what the next-generation assessments look like and to begin practice in them next year and a year where the district is held harmless as we explore. Just to be clear, differences from this year's test in the field test to what is going to be the case for the 14, 15 PARK test. There will be no double testing. No students will take both MCAS and PARK. Everyone will take, in, in the district, again, everyone will take either PARK or MCAS. Scores will be reported. So there will be scores for students, there will be scores for schools. We do have the option of paper and computer-based versions of the test. We will still have the MCAS alt, which is an assessment, a portfolio assessment for special-needs students. And MCAS science will continue. Right now, there is no national science curriculum and there's no national science test. So both of these assessments continue in the foreseeable future. A portfolio-based assessment as well as a science assessment. We still will have the 10th grade MCAS for the, at least through the class of 2018. That right now is written into the law. That law could be changed and more years could be added. But right now, that is the last year of, of MCAS as a graduation requirement. We are, one of the big concerns that everyone has is, are we able to, we just spent all this time doing educator evaluation and linking it to growth results and student SGP for goal-setting for teachers. They're guaranteeing us that growth measures for educator evaluation are absolutely possible. They have what they call equipercentile linking and they have all different metrics that are able to measure and make it possible for us to just transfer our goals from an MCAS SGP to a PARK SGP. And district and school accountability will be held harmless for 2015. We're going to explain that in a little bit more detail, those last two bullets. So the first part is, is accountability reporting different? It is, but only for schools that administer PARK. The level stays the same or it improves for 2014, but it cannot decline. Protocols will be followed that ensure PARK 2015 results do not disadvantage school accountability classifications in 2016, 2017, and 2018. Schools administering MCAS will be classified into a level as usual and will not be held harmless. Will data be reported for a school that chooses PARK? Yes, the Department of Education will report assessment and accountability data for all schools, whether they administer MCAS or PARK. Using this representative sample, ESAE will use equipercentile linking to compare and publish achievement levels and CPI scores based on 2015 MCAS and PARK results for each school. The Department of Education will calculate reliable student growth percentiles for schools that administer PARK. Without getting into too much detail, and it's a little bit hard to read, but this graphic shows if a student is taking MCAS in grade four and PARK in grade four, they can link the achievement of those two tests. This is how they're linking the two tests together. There are a few differences. You'll notice that PARK has five bands. There's actually five levels of achievement in PARK. MCAS currently has four. And we know there's the warning, needs improvement, proficient, and advanced. There are five levels, currently just level, just named level one, two, three, four, five. But they have a way and they're going to use the, the metrics to link a student taking MCAS and a student taking PARK for accountability measures. They've also done this for growth. So this is where a student takes MCAS in grade three, but PARK in grade four, and they figured out a way that they're going to be able to link growth. They're going to compare that person along with their cohort, how they did from MCAS to one, from one grade to the other, and then look at those same students who scored in the same place in 2014 and how they did on PARK in 2015. So they've guaranteed us, without getting deep into the weeds of the math here, that they've got metrics that we can all use to translate for educator evaluation goals and for other purposes. This shows you a little bit about held harmless. This is what it looks like. These are three examples. These are, this is School A, School B, and School C. You'll see that School A has 78 students, 76, I'm sorry, 78%, 76 in the high needs and the school percentile is 45. They're level one. You can see that they're, in 2015, their high needs group slipped below, down to 70. You have to have at least a 75 to remain in level one, but we are in level two in this district. If, if it was not held harmless, the level would have declined. But because of the hold harmless, that district remains at a level one. School B, you can see that the school percentile is below 25. It's at 24, which places them at a level two. You can see that the school percentile in 2015 is at 17, still below. It actually went down, it declined. But because of the held harmless, they remain as a level-two district. School C, you can see that their school percentile is below. They're at 19%. You can see that they increased to 24 and they were level two, which, which improved. Their score would have improved had they stayed with MCAS. But because they were held harmless, the improvement also transfers and translates. So again, you cannot go down. You can only go up or stay the same. And this is what they've done. If you remember, we've talked about there's a four-year calculation of cumulative PPI. What they've done here is they've just left 2015 completely out of the discussion. So in 2016, you'll be looking at the current year, 2016, and then you'll be looking at 14, 13, and 12. In 2017, you're looking at 17, 16, 14, 13. And in 2018, you're looking at 18, 17, 16, and 14. So they're really looking at this year, 2015, as a year for transition, a year for trying some new assessments that are next-generation assessments and holding the districts harmless that take that opportunity to start in those a year early. This is, the, these are the thresholds that are being put before the Board of Education. They want to make sure that PARK is rigorous, that it is of quality, that it provides coverage, and that it has technology readiness. This is one of those slides that let me see where they were coming from in terms of whether MCAS, current MCAS measures up or whether it needs to drastically change. They're looking at the rigor, is the test as rigorous as our current MCAS test? And they've done a first round of testing this year. They provided us with a ton of data to say that all, from all stories, it's just as rigorous, if not more, than the current MCAS test. And they're doing the second round next fall. The quality of the items, they want to make sure that they align with a full range of standards and a full continuum of student performance. So what that means is if you look at our current MCAS assessment, it is fully aligned with Common Core standards as far as coverage of content. What they will tell you is the questions in the current MCAS do not get into some of the language of Common Core, which actually asks students to demonstrate in multiple ways. If you recall, when I presented on PARK in the past, there's those questions that are A, B, C, and you go a little bit deeper into each question, where students really have to transfer their knowledge and apply it outside of just a multiple-choice scenario. They're going to look and see whether current MCAS can do that or whether PARK does it better. They're going to talk about whether it provides a valid and reliable assessment of their knowledge, skills, and their abilities. It's going to talk about coverage of all the standards, like I mentioned. And then they're going to say, "Is this something that can be done easily on computer, on computers or on paper?" There are many concerns and issues that we still have with the technology. So I'll just speak to that. Overall, I would say it went well, especially as we learned as a tech team, as each day went on. We had some issues with our wireless infrastructure. We had some issues with questions with using Chromebooks. We really pushed the system. A lot of districts did this and just did their pilot in a room that they knew would work 100%. We didn't. We took the approach that I wanted my team to really learn from what's out there. So we tested it on the wireless. We tested it with Chromebooks that are brand-new, with an, with an app. And we had mixed results. And so if we were to do this on computers, I would, for next year, want it in a computer lab and we would need to schedule it a certain way. We have other districts that, Burlington Public Schools, for example, entire, every single tested grade from grades three through 10 took the assessment this year. And so they've got a lot of data and information that they're sharing us that we can use. They also came up with a matrix, a grid, of how they scheduled students into the lab. And so those are things that we're going to be looking at to consider. But what I want to stress is, the administrators were faced with making this decision is, is really that, sticking with MCAS for one more year, as some districts are choosing to do. Again, it's not really a stance against what's coming. We, we are in a place where we're ready with Common Core. This is our third year of implementing Common Core in our classrooms. Teachers have changed their curriculum. Teachers are preparing with these new assessments. And as far as technology, we're not ready to do everything on the computers just yet. But to not be in that conversation, because there is a tremendous amount of feedback that the state needs to hear about how this test, if it is going to computers, which it is going to computers. It's much more efficient, cost-effective. The kids actually really like it and respond well to it, but there's a huge learning curve with how those students need to learn, how they need to be trained, how they need to learn how to type on computers, all these kinds of assessments. We want to be fighting those battles with the state. We need the money for devices. We need the money for infrastructure. We need the, we need the funds for teachers and classrooms to... What, what they're saying, and I agree, is that testing should be an afterthought. It's about increasing our digital learning in our classrooms. We shouldn't have a, a capacity issue to test students on a computer because we should be using computers every day, all the time, where kids are using iPads, Chromebooks, wireless computer labs. It should be an afterthought that, "Oh yeah, let's use those for tests." And we're not there yet. And a lot of districts are in a worse place than we are. We're in a pretty good place and we're going to be much better at our new middle school, high school than we are at our elementary schools. But we're slowly building one school at a time to get to that place. So those are the conversations that we need to be involved in. And we need to be getting involved as a district in PARK so that we're at the table, having those conversations. I had an opportunity the other day to be at a tech director's forum and just, they hadn't even considered some of the things we were bringing up. An example, when kids are highlighting in their text, we need that highlight from the first time they read it. Two or three questions later, those passage comes up and they're going back and forth between two. Those highlights aren't there from when they did them the first time. They have to be there. We have to be there saying, "This needs to be a part of the conversation." Some of the questions didn't work great. We need to make sure that they're working great. Because this is, from everything I've seen, and I've spent a lot of time on this, this is the direction it's going and we should be there to make sure it's done well. Our recommendation, after much deliberation, because our first thought was, we can't handle one more thing. We can't think about one more thing right now that's going on. And our first thought was, let's stick with MCAS. After these long presentations and we see the direction it's going and we look at the big picture over several years, the Administrative Council is recommending that we do the PARK assessment in grades three to eight for next year. Though we don't have to make the decision at this time, our thought is to do it on paper and pencil in four of our schools. paper and pencil in four of our schools. As far as the assessment in grade nine, my very first thought was, we're not, we're not going to go there. We're not going to do the assessments in high school at this time. We're not there. As you might recall, we are right now finishing up. Our teachers have done a great job. Our algebra teachers have rewritten their algebra and curriculum. They have realized, wow, this is very different than what we've taught before. We've taken standards from Algebra II, we've moved it into Algebra I. It's a whole new course that we've never offered in North Reading in the ninth grade before. And remember, that course is going to be offered in eighth grade in the future. We're not ready for that next year. It's going to be there in the future. I've mentioned it to the department head and to those teachers in the study group, and they actually said to me, we want to take the PARC test next year. We want the accountability for next year. They said, you need to be prepared that it's a, it's a learning year, and this is the first time with our curriculum, but the department head and the teachers actually said they wanted that feedback from an end-of-course assessment. That's a big shift from a 10th grade assessment that measures multiple standards. Just to be clear, I haven't mentioned this, eventually, as a part of this new testing system, if the 10th grade test were replaced, the Algebra II test and the 11th grade ELA test would replace the 10th grade test as the competency determination. And those two assessments, our 10th grade assessment, our current 10th grade assessment, does not translate into the colleges. If a student is, passes that competency determination, they still may have to take remedial courses in college. It's not happening in North Reading. I can tell you that right now. But it's happening in other places throughout the state. With this test, if a student successfully passes Algebra II or the 11th grade ELA assessment, they would place directly into college-ready courses. And there's tons of data, if a student has to take some of those remedial courses in college, their completion rate goes down drastically. They do not complete, never mind in four years. They're not, they're dropping out of college if they have to take remedial courses in college.
I think it was 75 percent, I think, drop out of college.
I think, I think that's what he said, 75 percent if you take remedial course. Again, not happening very much in North Reading. We can look at those statistics, we can look at those statistics only for students in state colleges. However, it's just part of the argument of why we're seeing the switch to a next-generation assessment. So because of that, with ninth grade, we're also considering paper-based testing in four schools. And again, this is something that we don't have to decide by June 30th, but our thought is that we would do the computer-based testing in one school. We have till October 31st to think about that. Again, I'll just mention, we are not doing the algebra test in eighth grade because we are not taking algebra in eighth grade, but we are well-prepared for that. They've done a lot in these presentations to make sure schools understand, because a lot of schools have not changed their algebra curriculum yet. We have, and we're well on our way to that path. It's going to be taught for the first time in ninth grade this year, and in eighth grade the following year, the same exact course. And I would think that those eighth-grade students, after completing Algebra I, would take that Algebra I end-of-course assessment, because it's the same course, the same assessment. So that is where we would go, but not for next year. At this moment, the school that we're considering for computer-based testing would be the Bachelor School. The reason for that is based upon the thought that we need many more devices to do this successfully, and with the approval of our large-cap plan, the Bachelor School is a school slated to get the newest technology this fall. This is something that I need to talk a lot further with Mr. Colleen about and with his teachers, and to hear back from, from everyone involved. But that is the thought at this moment, and we're, we're well aware that paper-based testing and computer-based testing are not the same. Okay? It's a similar test, you're going to have many advantages, but there's different variables at play, and we're very, very well aware of that. The reason why we don't want to just go with paper-based across the board is the big picture that we will be scaling up to computer-based. They may tell us in a couple of years that everyone is computer-based. To not be in that conversation and to get more data and to see how our side of it works with our infrastructure would be, would be a loss. And so in a year that we're held harmless, we really think we can have all of our people at all schools. If we were to do computer-based testing at all three elementary schools, I think our team would be spread very thin as we're still learning. But I think next year, by doing it in one school, we can still have our whole tech team there, really be there for, to provide that support. It, it worked really well. The kid had an error pop-up, there was one of four people there to fix it in, in just about no time at all. So this is our recommendation at this time. I'm sure there are many questions, and I will leave those questions...
Okay, Patrick, thank you. I'm going to first ask Kathy if you have anything you want to add to this.
I do not at this time. I would like to entertain questions from the committee.
Okay. And I just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but any of the elementary school teachers wanted to weigh in. I know the Administrative Council made a recommendation on this, so... Okay, I'll go to the school committee. Unless, Sean, do you have something?
No, I mean, it's, the pilot went very well at the Bachelor School. The technology, we use the computer-based, both for the PBA and the end of the year, I think the end of the year. Like Dr. Daley mentioned, we learned some from the March implementation to the June. Students were engaged. I would agree that the rigor of the assessment really measures the content understanding for the students. That biggest difference between what I saw, or how I understand, is that the MCAS test-taking strategies can, can help a lot with success. With, with the PARC practice tests, the rigor was there. It really had to demonstrate an understanding of the content.
All right, thank you, Sean. Thank you. Committee members, comments, questions, ideas?
I just wanted to say, I attended the DESE forum last week. Patrick happened to be there during the day, and he stayed for the forum. Based on the DESE presentations, based on the tone of all the communications I've seen from DESE, I think MCAS has slimmed to no chance of being kept on and slim left town last week. They are not, there was no discussion of MCAS, basically, unless it was brought up by an audience member. That doesn't even, even seem to be in their thought process. That said, I have a lot of concerns, especially about the technology versus paper. Pearson has promised two years of paper and pencil only. I fear that this district in two years is not going to be technologically equipped to offer the test in all schools. That's a big concern, and the money's not there from the state. There's, there's a small pool of money for infrastructure. There's no money for devices, and there's no way they're going to let kids bring their own devices in to use them, because it's a locked kind of thing, where you can only get access from an approved device. They made a compelling case for the rigor of the test, and, and I want to defer to Kathy on this. I think one of the things that I keep hearing, and this was one of my concerns early on, early on, I was, I was a staunch opponent to any of this, and I've spent a lot of time studying this, but I'm not an educator. So I, I can go so far, but I'm a marketing guy, and after about, you know, with a marketing guy, you can't go too far at all. So I depend on Kathy and Patrick. And one of the things that I kept asking them was, are the Common Core standards as rigorous as the mass standards we have now? And I asked, I called Kathy today at quarter of five, and I asked her again, are you sure the Common Core standards are as rigorous? I just like, if you could address that for a minute, and also address some of what may be fallacies that people are hearing, especially in the, in the English Language Arts area.
Sure. And Patrick, Patrick has, my area of expertise four years ago was in curriculum instruction and assessment. And still, it's very close to my heart. Patrick has presented at the state level on some of this stuff, so I'm also going to ask Patrick to come to the podium. You can supplement what I'm saying. But in terms of the rigor, the Common Core state standards depend heavily on the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Massachusetts is not number one in the, in the country, because we don't, we haven't been doing well or we haven't been aligned. Our curriculum frameworks have been in place since 1998. Actually, they've started, they were in place in 1994. Every Format Act was passed in 1993, and yes, I was an educator at that time. And I remember when the curriculum frameworks first were introduced by the Department of Education, there was an awful lot of outcry that we were moving to a standardized approach to education, and that couldn't be any further from the truth. That's the same for the Common Core. What the, the curriculum frameworks allowed us to do was to ensure a high level of consistency and coherence between one classroom at the same grade level and the classroom next door, as well as between classrooms from one grade level to the next, and from one school in the same district at the elementary level, for example, to the other schools in the district. When I was a teacher, I worked on the North Shore, and we loved the ocean. I can assure you that every single year, tide pools or the ocean were being taught from kindergarten through at least eighth grade. There was a significant amount of redundancy, and our students were missing out on learning opportunities, because as you know, the topics around learning a particular concept are endless. And so what the curriculum frameworks allowed us to do was to identify what are those competencies that we want our students to know and be able to do, and then how are we going to give students learning opportunities to do that, to learn those competencies? And those became what we, we were known as outcomes, grade-level outcomes. And so every school district went through this process of eliminating the redundancies, filling in the gaps, a high degree of professional development, and then came MCAS in 1998. So then we had to make sure that we all understood the difference between a norm-reference test and a criterion-reference test. MCAS is a criterion-reference test, and so is PARC. And by that I mean that the content that is part of the test is reflected in the curriculum frameworks. When we hear teaching to the test, I say, thank goodness, because I know that the curriculum frameworks, now the Common Core, are being taught to a high degree of mastery. And if we're teaching what we're supposed to be teaching, the test is secondary, because it's a criterion-reference test. And so our students are at an advantage if all of our teachers have a very in-depth understanding of what those standards are, and they are proficient in developing instructional strategies that meet the needs of all learners in the classroom. And that's how we differentiate our instruction. That's not easy to do, but that is teaching. That's what we're expected to do. We are professionals. We're trained to do this. The expectation is high, and we live up to those expectations, as evidenced by the high performance of our students in North Reading. So there is a great degree of coherence in North Reading already. We, our, our schools are either a Level One or a Level Two, and a district is identified as a level based on, I would say, the lowest level of a school. Level One and Level Two is a pretty high level in the accountability system. We are known as a Level Two district because we have two schools that are identified as Level Two at this particular time, one school. Okay? So by, most districts that are a Level Three, Level Four are a Level Five, very few are Level Five, so Level Three or Level Four across this state, have more catching up to do to close the achievement gap. So by having more catching up to do, they have more curriculum work that needs to be done, and therefore more assessment work that needs to be done. So they're not as quick to switch to, from MCAS to another test, because they're still trying to meet the expectations connected with MCAS. North Reading is in a different place. Our children are achieving at high levels. Now, we do have some areas where we need to improve. No district is perfect, so we still have our work cut out for us in order to best meet the needs of all students, but we are in a good place. And so when we talk about the rigor of PARC compared to the rigor of MCAS, we're talking about test items and how students are required to now demonstrate their knowledge. Gone are the days of multiple choice, when in doubt, choose C. You now need to be able to understand the content and be able to apply that content to a problem that you may never have seen before, because it's one thing to recall information and simply regurgitate it, it's another to take that information and apply it to a problem that you need to solve. And that's one piece that I think PARC is going to do to a higher degree than MCAS. Now, in MCAS, we have constructed response, but we have few of those in each of the content areas, and that constructed response is what you're going to see more of on the PARC test. We also, and that's the open response as well, that has multiple levels of a question to answer, as opposed to just picking A, B, C, or D.
Well, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess...
I mean, I could go on. This was my first passion.
But you didn't address the part of the Common Core, because the common complaint, this is actually seed of the fourth power, the common complaint I hear about Common Core is that the standards are being dumbed down, we're not going to teach poetry anymore, we're not going to read the classics in English, math is being dumbed down, my kid's not going to be able to take calculus. I'm just repeating things I've heard.
Can I get the bumper sticker answer? Just like the curriculum frameworks were a minimum, you can always exceed the minimum. That was the minimum that you needed to teach, so are the Common Core. They are the minimum. We can supplement what's in the Common Core. Patrick, you want to talk a little bit about the supplementation?
Sure, absolutely. And this is what I referenced, this is becoming a very political piece. So one thing that's out there is that the literature is dumbed down, you're not able to teach literature, classics anymore, and that's, that's not true. The percentages have changed, because if you recall, they've increased, it's not just being, it's really writing across the curriculum. As we've talked about in the past, it's now embedded into Common Core. So students are reading and writing in social studies, history class, as well as science class. So there's an increase in the amount of informational texts in those classes, reading and writing, responding to informational passages, that's starting in the elementary schools to prepare students for those higher-level reading and writing assignments that are going to be in those disciplines. So the percentages are increased in informational, but there's still plenty of time for creative writing and, and literature and classics in all of our classes and all of our options, and also in, in the assessments. There's still going to be narrative writing, there's still going to be that. It's just the focus is shifting, and it's more across-the-board reading and writing. The rigor of the classes, you'll, you'll hear that they'll say that, you know, Common Core leads you to Algebra II, and then experts have said that, well, that's not enough. They've never said that Common Core, that Algebra II is the ceiling for anybody. That's the baseline. Again, that's the course that you take to get into college. There's still many different opportunities for students to get to high-level mathematics, to calculus, to AP Statistics, and we have many of those opportunities.
That's up to the district, obviously, from the top, to have that initiative to exceed the Common Core.
It is, it is, and we absolutely are. I mean, that's, you know, Algebra II, students are all going to get there by sophomore, junior year, you know? So there's plenty of room, and we require four years of math. So we're going to be having many, many students exceeding that. There's information out there that just in general, the, the standards are not up to par. Everything in Massachusetts, we have all the Common Core standards, and then we actually went back and added standards beyond those that we call the MCAS. They're the plus standards, and they're denoted in the books as plus standards. Our standards are higher than any of the other states, and if you ask the teachers, they're, they're really saying, this is much more rigorous. Teachers are actually seeking out professional development. We've had a math expert in for our grade three to five math teachers at elementary, because the rigor of the math is changing. It's a lot more complicated in a lot of ways. They're adjusting very well, but there's a lot more training going on. So in all, in all those areas, this is coming out. What's, what's happening, and what, you know, I'll echo something, because we ask these questions of the Department of Ed also. You know, there's lots of states we see are backing out, backing out of PARC, backing out of Common Core. A lot of what's happening is those states were below Massachusetts in a level of expectation, and they are now, they now are not wanting to hold accountable to those high standards. Massachusetts, I know we've talked about the commissioner's role in PARC, but we drove the boat on this one, okay? We, we modeled PARC after our experiences in implementing MCAS. And the, we asked the question the other day, there's another national consortium of 21st century computer-based testing, and they, it's called Smarter Balance. The state of Massachusetts did not entertain Smarter Balance, because Smarter Balance does not stand up to our standards. It will not be as rigorous as MCAS, because we, it'll give you a lot of information on where students are, but it won't give you as much information about, did students meet the high standards that we have in Massachusetts? So there are a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of people who did work at the Department of Ed who are now saying some things that are, that are, that are interesting, about the number of experts involved and things like that. The, you know, I don't have all that information here, but there are a lot of counterarguments to that that are out there.
There were two people that were involved with the whole Common Core and PARC thing, and their ideas and proposals were not accepted, and they both left, and they are now going around the state talking about how Common Core and PARC did not meet the requirements. They're the two leaders of, of those groups.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. I'll let other people...
Okay, anybody else? Cliff?
What I, I've got, I always try to look for the takeaways in the, in the process, and one of the takeaways was that, and I've heard it before, I understand it before it came in yet, that Common Core is very largely dependent on Massachusetts. It was modeled on Massachusetts, and we are, that was sold because of our position in the country and the standard, the frameworks that we had. The other, the other takeaway that I have is that we're going to get PARC one way or another, whether it's called PARC or whether it's MCAS slash P. We're going to get PARC or something very similar to PARC. I have a, something that I, when you get to be my age, you kind of pick up on these little anecdotal things, you know? And, and as I often say, the only constant in our lives is change. Think about that a little bit. This is what happens, and we're, and change. I kind of wish that we were doing all of this a little slower, because I think it would be better if it transitioned a little bit slower. And, and I hate mandates. This looks like a mandate. I don't know where the money's coming from for the extra technology. I think that's going to be a very serious limitation to all of this. But it looks to me like we should be going with PARC and just moving ahead as fast as we can, and that as we... And that, as we move ahead on it, if we stumble a little bit and find some pitfalls and report them, maybe we'll be a leader in the group and modify things as it goes. But it looks to me like this is a thing we have to do.
Thank you. Janine?
I just have one question. When the administrative council got together, was there any pushback on going with Park instead of MCAS, or was it a unanimous thing that everyone was like, yes, let's go this direction?
Oh, I think there was a very healthy discussion. I was one of those people initially that thought we'd do MCAS next year. But once I started attending the presentations and having conversations with Patrick, I had a chance to go over and, and see the end-of-the-year test at the Batch Elder School. I did not get to see the PBA. I started to understand what the, the thinking is behind this new generation of assessments. And I was able to make the transition to, I think the time is right for us to move forward, particularly because North Reading is a high-performing district, and I don't see that changing. So I, and Patrick was able to help me understand, you know, some of the, the changes that were going to be put into place, and usually, I'm sorry, not usually, and what it means for us regarding technology. There are school districts that are involved in the field test right now, that, yes, may have more devices than we do, but they've put out strategies as to how they schedule the assessment. They did it for their whole school already, they scaled it up. And, and so we have best practices models out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. And when I started to see that, I saw the collaboration that could take place and the support that we would get from other districts. So my thinking started to change. And I do believe it's inevitable.
Karen?
Yeah, it's interesting, I got a lot of email from out of district today, from people who are very upset about this and are philosophically opposed to Common Core, and I'm, you know, outward conservative on this board, so I can just tell you, I didn't read all of them. What matters to me is whether our students are going to be compromised, and our families are going to be inconvenienced, and our educators are going to be stressed out. I favor having more practice in our district. I think as a high-achieving district, we are in a good position. I didn't hear any feedback from families about whether or not the, those who were involved in the pilot had any concerns, other than technology, which were, we've been briefed on. We are going to be part of these assessments. I took my GREs, I remember, on the computer when they were first being done, and it was terrible. And it was early, you know, process, and there are many learnings to come from that. So I can see us sort of getting on the bandwagon, and again, being part of what Patrick calls the conversation, or the sort of discussion that's ongoing, that we have a seat at the table in those conversations. But that table has already been established, it's there. I don't see anything changing. There's been so many mandates that have come down, the anti-bullying stuff, the background checks, which we'll talk about later tonight, there are so many things that we have to do. I think the state is moving forward in a way that they're trying to be accountable and giving us information. It's unfortunate the commissioner has this relationship with Park at clouds, I think something that is positive for our state, and we are a leader in, in education, and I think all of that makes sense. Most of the stuff I hear about Common Core comes from people in other states where the implementation of the Common Core is the problem, not the actual standards, where they're implementing it incorrectly, and educators not being trained to actually implement curriculum in the way they should. And so I understand the heated nature of, of that conversation, but the conversation we're having tonight is whether or not we should move forward. We are a forward-thinking district. Our kids are amazing, I saw that at graduation last Friday. So I think we should move forward with this. I'd be interested in hearing if we can entertain public input.
We are going to entertain public input right now. No, do you have something else?
I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay, yeah, anybody that wants to weigh in on this, please just come up to the podium and identify yourself, and we'll hear whatever you have to say.
Good evening. My name is Julie Kopke. I am a parent of two children in town, I'm also an educator. I'm here tonight to express some concerns that I have over the adoption of Park over MCAS for this upcoming school year. First and foremost, I feel that many parents in this town may not be aware of the logistics, as well as the ramifications involved with Park's implementation. I am hoping that tonight's presentation will be shared with the entire school community, so parents can reflect and provide their opinions to school administration and school committee members. My first concern, how does Park accommodate our special education population? Does Park provide individualized tools that enable each and every special education student to fairly access and perform on its assessment? Are our teachers prepared to work with this new assessment tool while addressing their students' varied needs? MCAS allows for student-specific IEP accommodations and assistive technologies to be employed during testing. My second concern, from a technology standpoint, are we ready for district-wide Park implementation? Although Dr. Daley did address this concern with the use of paper pencil format, these major questions remain for the future. How many capable devices do we have? How many do we need? Are the school's networks ready to accommodate these increased demands? Do we have enough technical support staff to sustain the hardware and network additions? What are the overall costs of this substantial upgrade? What must be sacrificed from our budget to compensate for these improvements? My third concern, the subject matter and test format of Park still remain quite a mystery. While some, a very small portion of our students did participate in the pilot administration this spring, there just does not seem to be enough information available to our students. The inconsistency between hardware interfaces, iPads, Chromebooks, desktops, laptops, and paper formats should make us question Park's reliability. MCAS is not unfamiliar to teachers and students here. MCAS has evolved over the past 16 years. While curriculum frameworks have been in influx, MCAS has been quite consistent. I don't question Park's rigor. I am very concerned if our students are ready for it. Historically, the students in North Reading have done very well on MCAS. Why should we jeopardize this success? Fortunately, we have been given the choice for this upcoming school year. We should make the best decision for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kopke. I'm going to ask Patrick to address these. Patrick, I think there were several concerns. Obviously, the first was sped, the second was the technology capabilities, and the third was the subject matter, and then the formatting of the testing, so.
Sure. I appreciate those. Those are definitely questions that I've wrestled with, and we've all wrestled with quite a bit. The, as far as accommodations, every accommodation that exists now will be included for paper and pencil tests. One difference is the Park test is, is a timed test, whereas MCAS was untimed for everyone. So our specialty department is very well aware that they do need to start writing into all students' IEPs that they require untimed tests. There's a whole bunch of data supporting that, that they're saying, if students exceed a certain amount of time, I'm not talking about students who have it in their IEP, but regular education students, that there's actually no advantage to the untimed nature. And when they talk about how long the actual implementation, number of days, number of hours, they figure it's actually going to be less than current MCAS because of the untimed nature of it, when you actually, because you, we found, when they finish, they're done. They're up, I mean, and everybody was done during the, most were done during the regular time, and then we had a programmed overtime, extended time. Nobody was at that end of the overtime needing extra time that we worked with. Other accommodations are all built in, when we talk about computer assessments, they're built in. So right now, for MCAS, we have a teacher reading it to a student. They have a device that reads it back to them, and they're listening in headphones. And so there's all, for every accommodation, there are many different accom, there's no accommodation that isn't being met. The only one that, that is a little bit different is the Alternative Education Portfolio, which we will still be doing, we're leading the country in that piece that wasn't a part of Park, and we're going to continue that. But all of the accommodations are built in. These are tools that we absolutely need to start practicing authentically. Students are not used to maybe listening to something, we have programs where they're doing that, but we want to do this. One of the nice parts about Park is that there is a formative assessment that happens in mid-year, and this is something that is at cost, it's not part of the package. But we were assured the other day that part of the economy of scale of going with multiple states into Park is that we're actually going to save money, the test will cost less than the current MCAS, and part of that savings, they're going to put to purchasing that formative assessment tool for all districts. I'm going to hold them to that promise. These are the conversations I want to be in, to hold them to that promise. That allows teachers throughout the year to go to the lab, to take out Chromebooks, to whatever, to use iPads, and have students use these tools, the drag-and-drop tools, the listening tools, changing screen. I mean, on an MCAS test, you get a large print, with this one, you've got all kinds of magnification tools. Yes?
I just want to, you know, verify that our students are, you know, they haven't had a lot of practice with those tools.
They have not, they have not.
So this year, although they're there, they're not comfortable using them.
Yep, and we need, and that's, that's, I take that, and I say, that's why we need to practice more. And when I, when I can say to the teachers, here's where we're going, this is what it looks like, now we can start investing in things that look like this. Not that this is driving everything, but it makes a lot of sense to say, let's start using computer-based modifications and accommodations to prepare kids for standardized testing, and for really, what they're going to be doing, you know, there's no one reading you an assignment in a job when you're older, but you can pause a video, you can expand, you can, all those kinds of skills and tools are the tools they're going to be using in the real world to, to, for accommodations in the future.
I have just a second. The state's not calling it this, because they're going to score the test this year. This is a glorified trial. This is an expanded trial, because the year really isn't counting. They're going to give us scores, but they're going to hold us harmless. They're going to give us scores, but they're not going to count them going forward. In my opinion, which is why I want to do this, is, it's a trial year that gives us a real trial, as opposed to 74 kids, or whatever we had taking the test.
Your concerns, we're headed here anyway, but why do it this next year?
And I'm an educator, and I've been on the teaching side.
Where are you?
I'm not employed right now. I mean, I, you know, piloted the first MCAS in 1998, I'm very aware of it. From an educator's point of view, I, I completely understand your point on, it's another trial year, but as the person to administer and deal with children with that unfamiliarity of, of a tech, you know, piece of technology and, and the test, I, I question that.
Right.
So you think another year would be available to us to practice, or to get them?
Oh, I wish we had another year. I agree with that.
If we don't do Park next year, we don't get to see it at all. I didn't get to see grade levels that we didn't test this year. Those are, I totally support that we didn't do this test at the middle school and the high school, but wearing my tech director's hat, I wanted to see it. I wanted to see ELA at the high school, I wanted to see more pieces of it. And again, if this was a conversation about sticking with the MCAS we've had for years that's proven well, and it is, it is interesting, because 10 years ago, 19, you know, 15 years ago, people were, were really rallying against MCAS and standardized testing, as the superintendent pointed out. And now everyone is saying, I think people have realized after this time, that there is a good sense to this accountability. And if the choice was between Park, you know, changing, or staying with what we have and saying, well, what's, you know, what's in Massachusetts works very well, I think that's a different conversation. Again, our conversation is about one year, and do we stick with the old for one year, or do we get a head start on, on what's next? The third part about the technology, I completely agree that I have concerns about the technology. Davis much has hinted that this is, much like a NEAS site visit, can spur changes for, for things that need to happen, by, by getting a head start with this Park initiative, and being able to say, we need the devices at the state level, at the town level, at all levels, to get the devices. And again, the, being test-ready is an offshoot of being digital learning-ready. We need these devices, we need this infrastructure, we need this for what we do in the classroom every day, all day, and then the testing should be able to be there.
Well, we need, how far away are we from having them, and how deficient are we right now?
We're, we're close, and, and we fill out a technology readiness survey every year. And again, we could do this. At the Batch Elder School, we tested on the Chromebooks, at the little school also, we were, if we are to do computer-based testing, I want it to be able to work in one lab. And again, I just want to be clear on this, because I've said this to Sean, we have to stop thinking of the computer lab as the classroom. What we're trying to do now is getting carts of Chromebooks, carts of iPads, every classroom becomes what we used to think of as the computer lab. So even though that lab, with all the hardwired computers, that's more than enough for one classroom, is being used for three weeks straight, let's say, let's just say that's how long it takes, the classes taught in there can now happen down in the library, they can happen up in, up in a different wing of the building. So the computer learning in other classrooms is happening, that lab gets reserved, and we do testing with grade three, one class, and then grade three, the other class, and then grade three, and then grade three, and then four, and four.
So you could do that, allocate your resources.
And we're going to structure that. So I want to base it so that we can do the whole testing in one place, and kind of rotate kids through there. And you have, you know, we have to really look at staffing and how we do that, but part of having all these accommodations is helpful, because now you don't have to do small-group setting, one teacher, one-on-one to read something, kids can put on headphones and have it read to them. So it does help us with some of that. So those are the things we need to look at, to make sure that this is completely feasible for next year, as far as the computer-based aspect of it.
She also asked, are students ready for the rigor of the test?
Yeah.
The subject matter.
And so, and are students ready for the rigor? They, they have been practicing with Common Core materials for quite some time. Every year, they're learning, and they, they should be ready. The test should be assessing, and remember, these tests are not supposed to be assessing students, they're, they're assessing our preparedness of the curriculum. Are we preparing students for this Common Core curriculum? And so they, they should be ready. And if the data comes back that they're not, then that gives us the information we need to make sure that we improve.
We're going to have to find out.
Yeah.
The other question, and I actually had the same question. She asked about the subject matter, the test format, or a mystery. And, and I think it would be a good understanding of, what's the difference between the end-of-the-year assessment and the May, March, April assessment?
Yeah, and I, to that point, it's been slower coming out, but if you go to our district website, under Park, you can see, there's information there, there's a, a video from the commissioner. There's a link at the bottom that has, I'm supposed to be speaking on the mic, I'm sorry, that has a link directly to several different practice tests. You can actually, it looks and feels and acts just like what, what I saw. Again, I only saw third and fifth grade math, but it looks and feels exactly like, at least on those two assessments. And I've shared that with all our teachers, who immediately said, wow, we need to practice these kinds of things, you know, moving and graphing on a computer. They're not doing that at our high school right now. We're not graphing on a computer base. And those are things they're seeing right away, we need to start practicing this, because this is, these are the kinds of tools students are going to use, not just on an assessment, but in mathematics out in the world, they're using computers for this, so we need to practice. So I would recommend that everyone, I will put, when I post this PowerPoint, I will redirect that as well, because that's a great thing for parents to, to check out and to, and to see some of those questions as they're coming out.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to weigh in on this? Come on up.
Please. Hello, my name is Lena Simone. I am from North Reading, I'm a mom of two girls. What I want to say first is I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Everyone here is here because they care about our children. I'm sure you wouldn't do this all the time for free, if you didn't care about our children.
I have to think about that. No, you're right, you're right. Go ahead.
One of the things I tell my girls, they're eight and 12, is that one person really can make a difference, and this is hopefully my stab at trying to do so. Probably the biggest issue that I have with the Park test is, are the financial implications? The technology, obviously, we don't have all of that in place. I heard Mr. Bauer's actually, I think, just said, I don't know where the money's going to come from. I don't either. We just spent $75 million or committed to on a school. So I would venture to say that the well's probably dry, as far as the taxpayers are concerned. Now, when I was looking up all of my information on the Park test, I got, the majority of the information I'm going to cite is from Park Online directly. The cost of the Park test is listed as $29.50 per student. Now, this was when 20 states were actually in the consortium. Now there's 14 states left in that consortium, with only nine being firmly committed. Less states would equal more money for us to pay. There is a pencil and paper version, as everyone has talked about tonight. The pencil and paper version is actually $3 to $4 more per student, and you can find that at Park Online. Some of the slides that Mr. Daley put up, that were from that Park Online as well, and if you go there, you can find all of this. MCAS versus Park. Obviously, we've talked a lot about why we want to take Park. I'm going to talk a little bit about the differences between the two, from my perspective. MCAS is taken once per year. It's tough, it's tough on the kids, I will say it. I am a fan of assessment testing, so I think it's a good idea. Park is twice per year, so it doubles the testing time for the students, as well as the preparation time for the administrators and the teachers. What is also coming down the pike is there are long-term plans to potentially put in two more tests per year with Park. I want to talk about data ownership right now. MCAS data is owned by the state of Massachusetts. Park data ownership is unclear at this point.
I mean, I'll just tell you, the, there's been a big effort, there's a list serve of school committee school committee members, an email listserv, of trying to get this information from the state, and we've been stonewalled. We haven't gotten anything.
Right, and that's a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
I want to know who's getting my children's data.
All they've said to us is, well, we're going to comply with all privacy rules, and that isn't good enough for me.
Exactly, and, and I'll get to this in a little bit, but I keep hear, constantly hearing the word "secret." We don't know, we can't find out. And that is a problem. We're potentially making a decision tonight based on information that we don't know. Going back to the cost, one of the things I forgot to mention, I apologize, is that Pearson is providing the publishing software for the Park test. That software's good for three years, then it needs to be renewed. So what that means is that is not just a stagnant cost, that's an ongoing cost that the school district will have to absorb. As far as using the iPads versus paper and pencil or the devices, I guess, if we do use the devices, we need to discuss the socioeconomic disadvantage that may occur. Many of the children in this district do have access to devices, mine do, but there are children that do not. So if we go to a computer-based testing, it's kind of a no-brainer that the kids that have all the devices and are on them all the time will likely do better than the other children or at least be able to navigate. I'm not trying to say that they won't do well on the, you know, the actual questions. And it's ironic because I happen to be having this conversation with another parent today and her nine-year-old son was sitting and listening, and he said, as far as the technology's concerned, what happens, MCAS is not a time test, but this is a time test, what happens when I run out of time? What happens if the computer's slow and I just plain run out of time? It's a child who's not on an IEP or doesn't have any sort of special accommodations to be made. So that's a real concern for me. Some kids are faster on the devices than others. I've heard a little bit about what kind of the hurry is here to, we've got to make a decision right now. I know about the hold harmless part of this, that we, if we take the Park, we will be held harmless and MCAS results will count against us. I don't know why there would be any reason for those MCAS results to go down since we performed so well. And I know some of that has been already talked about by Mr. Daley. This has been made mention also as far as Mitchell Chester is concerned and his relationship. I personally am not comfortable that Mitchell Chester is the commissioner of elementary and secondary education for the state of Massachusetts and is also not only on the governing board for Park, but is the chairman of the governing board for Park. That is, at worst case, I mean, at best case, a conflict in anything I've ever seen. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the school project that we have. The school project was brought forth by wonderful people in this community. There were presentations, there were just emails, there were phone calls. I joined the cause. I was actually the enro representative, the liaison for the HUD. I believed in it. Even when we came back for a second over, I still believed in it. I convinced people, you couldn't go anywhere without hearing about the schools. But yet, there's not too much about Park and the Park test. And in fact, I sent out, I would say a minimum of 200 emails and the majority of people, you know, to my contacts, friends and associates, most of the people who got back to me said, what are you talking about? What is Park? So the reality is that we heard a lot about the actual school and I'm so grateful for that because I'm so supportive of it. But I need to ask you all, what is more important, the building your children sit in or what they actually do when they're in the building? And as I said, parents are not aware of this. And if we had, I guess, the time period to choose between March and June, why are we seeing a presentation now? And I know that Massachusetts and the school committee, secondary school committee, they, they met at a later time in the year than I, than what is ideal. But I just feel as though, at best case, it's unfair to the parents that are not aware of what is going on to hold a vote this evening on this issue. School activities are getting over. My kids just finished up with a couple of the things that they're doing, soccer and lacrosse, and I would like to at least ask you to please hold off from making this decision until the 23rd when other parents can actually get a chance to view Mr. Daley's presentation. He's been very accommodating that he will put it online. I had a few days' notice to try to get in front of you wonderful people and to tell some of my friends and neighbors about this, and I'm really hopeful that you will at least consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Patrick, can you respond to good luck?
Can I ask a question before he responds?
Yes, go ahead.
None of you, this is a question, Patrick. I appreciate your comments. She raises a, a very good point that as a marketing person, it kind of embarrasses me, but why didn't we have any public hearings or sessions?
I can start with that one, absolutely. I have been talking about Park at school committee presentations. I've been working it in slowly into the Math night presentations that I did at the elementary school and I did at the middle school. For the last year and a half, I've been working in Park-style questions to those parent presentations. I've had a lot of parents come up and ask questions, very good questions that I've then brought back to the state and said, how are you going to address this? How are you going to do that? This is part of why, I'm actually, believe it or not, part of why I'm suggesting Park is because I can finally start to say, this is where we're going, here's what it looks like. I've been a little bit hesitant to really come out and put some out there because it was, it wasn't clear, are we going this way or are we going that way? But big picture, the superintendent got an email about this Park versus MCAS decision on May 19th or May 16th. The first information for us was on May 19th, I believe, on a Monday. We then went and heard about it on the 22nd. The administrative council did a, a, I feel, I'm talking to the mic, but I want to look at the people. But on May 20, on May 23rd, we did a webinar and we got it on the first school committee meeting that we possibly could.
And in all fairness, we, we have had a number of discussions at the school committee level.
I would argue, I would argue that even if it means 200 people come carrying torches and big boulders, that we think about delaying the vote and having
Sure.
an opportunity to have a session in the auditorium at the high school. And if 12 people show up, 12 people show up. If 200 show up, 200 show up.
Yeah, we have until June 30th.
Yeah, we don't have to take the vote tonight.
I do recommend, I, I would hope, and the superintendent obviously makes his decision, but I was hoping that we would make a firm decision by June. If we really feel that this is the way to go for, for certain reasons, let's lock it in and let's use the summer to decide about computer-based testing versus other pieces. But, but that's, that's up to you to decide.
But even for education purposes, if, if four of us, three of us, two of us have made up our minds or whatever, but even for education purposes,
Sure.
you know, I, I'm one of the biggest complainers about the fact that we have 54 people at town meeting and no one shows up, but people who care will show up.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I, I would, I just want to, you know, I apologize that I haven't made more presentations just like this nights leading up. We've only had this information for a few weeks. And I, every time I go, I learn more. Mel and I were at our presentation
Last Thursday.
last Thursday. So this is, you know, I have a lot of questions about why that's coming so quickly. Just to address some of your other points.
Patrick, can I just, because I can say this. The state is really screwed up, this whole process, because they're, they're going so fast. And in North Reading, we care about engagement of our entire community. This is why we spent so much time on the, the school project and had a very meaningful, extensive dialogue, vetting all these different issues. All these issues that have been raised so far are incredibly wide-ranging and important. And the state basically has said, we're just going to go fast with all this stuff like we're doing with educator evaluation systems and other. Some of this stuff is just amazing how fast and furious they are about it. So we have very little choice about what's coming down the pike, but as soon as we get information about it, I think it's very important for us to distribute it and have a conversation about it. Even if we have to do it within the next two weeks, we should have it, in my opinion.
I think we're all convinced this is where we're headed.
Well, I don't think we have a choice, but I think we can at least
Present it.
vet it in the community in a way that people respect that.
I don't question that's where we're headed, but this year, the state has afforded us an opportunity to make a wise decision on behalf of our students. So I mean, that's just, you know, both of our concerns.
I would ask, why is that wise, though?
If we would approve this, it would be unwise.
Right. Why is, why is it wise to stay with?
Well, you're wrong.
Look at that.
Why is it wise to stay with MCAS if we're
Define wise.
convinced that Park is coming?
I don't feel that our students and our staff are ready to implement it.
I guess I would ask on the staff.
The question is, are they more ready in two years if we do it next year? It's big picture. MCAS is much, it's definitely the easier thing to do for next year. And again, if this were a choice about taking a stand and saying, what we have right now is good, don't, you know, slow down. If I thought, if every district chose to not do it, it would slow down, I'd be advising something different. But I really think this is about big picture, preparing us for the next two, three, four, five years and getting on, and getting on to pace. If I could, the, there were a lot of questions about funding that both folks raised. I just want to say about the, the two things to clarify. All those costs, the cost per test and the cost per, the cost of some of these pieces are state costs, they're not districts. So we're not picking up, if the price goes up, we're not picking it up. Is there a trickle-down effect? There would be, of course, but those costs would be absorbed by the state. And as I mentioned before, it's still going to come in at less than what we're paying right now. The conversation about, you know, the paper and pencil test costing more is one of the battles that I think I want to be fighting next year to say, I want, I don't want two years, I want four years, we're not ready yet, you know. Those are the fights and conversations, and I want to be able to have the data to say, here we are, North Reading, a very good district with a great infrastructure and a new building, and we still need more time with a free paper pencil test. Those are the kind of conversations I think we need to be having at the state level. As far as funding for the devices, again, that needs to happen anyway. And we are getting, the building project is getting a lot of great devices as a part of what's being spent there, but that's an ongoing need. You know, we, we have an ongoing need for devices and part of the reason we want those devices, we're very well aware that some students at home don't have some of the advantages. That's why we need to be providing those opportunities in school because every student is going to be taking online courses in college, they're going to be taking online, they're going to be doing a lot with computers at their jobs, we need to be doing this. So that, that's happening whether the test goes to computer or not. We need to be getting more devices and we can use this as leverage. That's one of the thoughts. The, the time period question, I, I have that in the mail. Freshly, your point about the time period of when the testing, too much testing?
Frequency of testing.
Yeah, that is twice as long. So it's four hours as compared to eight hours for Park. It's compared to four hours as well as the fact that there are long-term plans for two more tests.
Right. Is that the ninth and 11th grade or do you mean like the science or things?
I'm not so sure, just from what we've gone from Park.
Sure. And again, as I mentioned before, I, I think, you know, the number of tests, the number of hours testing, I think we, we're all concerned about overtesting. We don't want, that, that's tail wagging the dog. It's about teachers, it's about kids, it's, that's where the rubber meets the road. There is more testing, however, they're, they're, the data they're providing on, on the timing that they feel with the untimed test, they're saying they feel the, the actual hours on the test might be less, is what they're saying. And again, if this was about MCAS as we know it or Park, it's only that for one year. The new MCAS and the new Park are both going to be increased, there's going to be new grades, there's going to be new testing. All of the data that they're driving, they, they want to have tests in nine and 11. That's going to happen no matter what the test is. You know, I, I, I really feel that.
So, look, why don't we do this?
Yeah.
Why don't we, again, put this on the agenda for June 23rd, okay? Let's try to get the word out because they've raised some excellent, excellent points, but I think we need to be able to respond to all the concerns that they raised because of the same concerns other people are going to have. Let's do it, you know, obviously we'll be in this room and we'll put it on the agenda early so that people aren't sitting around waiting. So we'll get off by, say, 7:15 as far as this issue, yeah.
We have a presentation for a coach.
Yes.
And we also have the middle school and the high school's school improvement plans.
All right, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we try to have, why don't we schedule this discussion for like
Can we start early?
We could, well, we could start earlier than 7:00 maybe?
Yeah.
All right, can we do that? Can we start at 6:30? And then we'll, then we'll get to this discussion, say, by, you know, 7 o'clock. Just to give people an idea that they're not sitting here like that tonight, we had a lot of things on tonight, that's, that's a problem.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll start the meeting at 6:30, we can do the presentation. Yeah. Go ahead, question.
Hi, Jeff, you're 427 Park Street. Even though I am a selectman, I am not here representing the Board of Education. I just had a couple of questions. One with regard to the vote, which will now be the 30th
23rd.
decision, I mean, the 23rd, I'm sorry, to accept Park in its entirety, but it's a trial period for a year.
Well, I think it's
This is just a one-year vote.
proposed by Patrick for the, for the year.
The vote is for next year, what test we're taking next year. We don't get to decide for the year after that.
Right.
The state decides that. The state's going to tell us what, what the test will be the year after.
Yeah.
Because what the test will be, it's, so whether we're using Park or not.
Right. The, the state makes that decision, the Board of Education makes that decision in the fall, not this board, the state board.
But it won't be MCAS.
It will not be MCAS.
It won't be MCAS, we'll have it today, right.
Where it's going to be.
I, I guess the, the big question that I have in the, in the bigger picture here is, it seems to me that MCAS is being pushed aside, they don't have a place at the table, and this is a federal program, Common Core's coming down and approaching us, and MCAS is just getting approved. Why, why don't they have a place at the table? I guess I don't understand that. And I think a lot of parents probably have that question because we've been doing it for years. We have a pretty good, successful program here in our district, thanks to all of you. And I think I made that comment one time.
I don't think the program, the curriculum changes, Jeff. I think that stays the same, it's just the method of testing that we're talking about here.
Right, the thing is, Jeff, and too, Common Core has been thrown at us, shoved down our throat, whatever term you want to use.
I didn't have that down.
But, but it's, it's implemented in this district. I, I mean, we, we've whole hog committed to Common Core and I believe implemented it, and I'm sure there's still parts of it maybe in the upper-level grades, but we've implemented it in all our schools, correct?
It's a requirement and we've been implementing it since 2010.
There's no choice. It's, this is the
It's not a choice.
And, and MCAS has assessed for that Common Core as well.
Correct, we've used MCAS, right, right.
It very well isn't, you know, assessing Common Core.
Right, again, MCAS is assessing the standards, but not necessarily the full standards. They're not assessing the transfer skills, the multiple modes of thinking as an extrusion. And the commissioner's come right out of the Boston Globe and said, MCAS no longer will provide what we need moving forward.
Right.
And there's front-page stories.
Well, no, I've, I've, I've been meaning
Yeah, just to address the, just to address the seat at the table, there is, I'm not going to get into the, the fact that the commissioner's the chair, I, I agree that there's questions there, but he's got the head seat at the table. This Park assessment was designed by Massachusetts, he's the chair, and so our standards and all the work we've done for the last 15 years and all the states, all the data that they're using showing how Massachusetts ranks compared to other countries in the world, we're at the top in the world if you took Massachusetts as a country. And that information is kind of driving the creation of all this. So we've, I don't know if that's what you meant by seat at the table, but we've had the chair seat at the table, as a state.
As a state, I guess.
And even though the commissioner, this does, it, it does appear, you know, when you first look at it, to be, which you might consider a conflict, I think that's been reviewed.
It has.
And, and.
By the ethics board on state.
You, you, you can't necessarily, you, you have to judge it on its merits, even though, you know, he's in that position. It's unfortunate that he's in that position, but I still think it has to be judged on its merits, so.
It's so terrible.
Still a conflict.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify those two things, thank you very much.
You know, I did want to address that conflict issue, that's been another big issue on the, on the MASC email listserv.
Some people gravitate to that, they go right to that and say, oh, this is, this is wrong, you know.
To me, I, I think Patrick's point of us having the head seat at the table is good, but anybody who looks at that says, well, of course we're going to Park, what else are we going to go to? And so that makes it look really ugly. You know, maybe he could have had a seat at the table and been a consultant to Park, or he could have been whatever, but by being chairman, it's ugly. It just doesn't look right.
Perhaps have resigned from one board.
The issue is at the state level, it's always at the state level, if you know.
I'm sorry, Cliff?
That's a big problem for me, I, I think that that's a conflict, if it isn't, it's an appearance of a conflict, same thing. But it's been ruled by the Ethics Commission that it isn't a conflict, so they overruled me. I, I don't often get my choice on these things. The bigger problem that I see is the other issue you brought up, where does the data go?
Yes.
How many people, who is going to get the data? And that hasn't come back out, and as Mel has said, it has been at the consternation of the, the MASC listserv, that we have frustration building on that, and DESE refuses or can't, I don't know which, give us the information. It would seem like that was something that, and it's been asked for by MASC.
Right.
And it was asked for weeks ago.
Oh, it's about two and a half months ago now.
If I could, and I think Mel might have mentioned this, he asked the question directly of the Associate Commissioner the other day about the data. They said that they are preparing a, there's, there are two major pieces coming out, two major briefs to come out over the summer. I agree that it looks bad that it's not out yet, I'm not trying to defend the fact that they haven't released it, but they did answer Mel's question directly, saying, there's absolutely not going to be any data shared, these things are not going to happen, with all of the federal guidelines around confidentiality, that some of the things that are being speculated absolutely cannot happen, or else we would be sued into the stone age by releasing some of the information, some of the rumors that are out there circulating about sharing of data. Again, it would be great if they came out in the official paper and, and shared that with us, they said that is forthcoming, and Mel said, you know what, it looks really bad that it's not out yet. But they did say there's, that those claims are never going to happen because of FERPA, you know, it's, it's the Freedom of Protection, we can't, they cannot violate that, they will be absolutely sued into the dark ages.
All right, what we're going to do, we're going to cut it off here now, and based on your recommendation and your suggestion, we're going to put this over until June 23rd.
Patrick, obviously. Do we want to meet in the small group room maybe at the middle school, it's bigger? What do you think?
A large.
Is it larger than this?
I'm not sure that we'll need it, but we could do that.
Or is it better to meet here?
I don't know what the schedule is.
It's cooler in that room.
Well, that's the last night before the, that's the last night before school gets out.
Yeah, let's.
We're trying to pack up the middle school.
I think we'll be fine here.
We don't want to be there until 23rd.
We'll be fine here. So June 23rd, we'll try to get to it no matter where we are, and they're going to write at 7:30, so people will know that we're going to get to that at 7:30. We can start the meeting at 6:30, Kathy?
Yes.
You can do other business, get a heads start on other business.
Yes.
And Patrick, you can anticipate the types of questions you're going to get, you know, from the audience.
Please try to get people here, because we do, we do want to hear. And, and I got a bunch of emails saying, I know there was one North Reading man, I felt bad, but they were all, it was coming in in droves, and they were all people that don't live in North Reading, and I was like, I don't care, I mean.
You do live in North Reading, right?
Yeah, they do, they do.
I got back, I got back to them and I said, stop harassing me, you don't live here, I'll listen to my constituents, and I felt bad because there was one man from North Reading in that pile that I sent.
For your driver's license.
Apologize.
All right, we'll be checking IDs.
So we'll move the vote to the 23rd then. All right, so get people here on the 23rd for 7:30.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your participation, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Very good to spend the night.
Okay.
And then Patrick can get everything up on the website, and.
Yeah, as much as he can get the.
Can we send, Kathy, can we send an email out to parents letting them know that?
I'll do it through the principals.
When, yeah, when Patrick puts that up, the presentation and everything, that'd be great.
Okay, moving on, we have our policy manual review, and this is G, Policy GAM. This says, people might remember, we, I think we actually passed this policy back in 2012, it's now being revised along with regulations attached, based on the MASC recommendations and some new legislation, legislative requirements that have come out. Cliff, you, you worked on this?
Yes.
Okay, so again, if you want to just give us an overview.
Policy GAM is, is formerly Corey checks.
Right.
But it has now changed to include new requirements, which involves background checks, and includes Corey requirements within the policy. Actually, it came out of MASC as a different, with a different designation on it, but we decided that we would move away from that, because the, the designation more closely fits in our policy manual as in G, and so it would, we just use the same policy number that we had for Corey checks.
Okay.
This, this is basically the MASC.
Policy that they've adopted?
Policy, as they wrote it up, we compared the language of Corey, the, the, the policy that they put out was ADDA, and had an ADDA R regulation with it.
Okay.
But we just incorporated it right into Corey, we looked at Corey that we had, and their policy meant all of our Corey requirement, so we just, we just went with their.
And this reflects the national investigation that's now being done, as opposed to just a statewide investigation.
Right, that's correct, and fingerprinting.
Right. And this is for all existing employees, and then it lists the whole, every other category of person who needs to go through this check.
The basic, the basic thing is it goes to all individuals who may have direct and unmonitored contact with children.
Okay. Everyone have a chance to take a look at this? Any suggestions, recommendations, questions?
I just wanted to check on the second paragraph, it says that.
The policy.
In the policy, it says that we shall continue to obtain periodically, but not less than every three years, from DOJ, IS, the info, is there a financial obligation for us to do that?
The Corey is, we are not charged for a Corey as a nonprofit.
Thank you.
We submit that on a daily basis.
Really? There's no charge?
No charge.
Michael Prosser.
I just want to mention, I, I believe Massachusetts is the only state in the nation that is not doing this, which is why we have to do this. I, I feel badly, it's not a cost that I want the district to take on, but I actually do feel badly that employees have to pay this out of their own pocket. It seems to me that if the state's going to impose something on employees, they probably should help defray the cost.
Right back to that same mantra that we have about unfunded mandates.
I mean, but think about it, though, it's $55 for anybody who's DESE.
It's a tax on working.
License, and then $35 for other employees who aren't, I mean, that's money that, for some people, is a good chunk of money out of a weekly paycheck, so I feel badly for it, for them, but I guess there's no alternative.
It falls in the category of a licensure-type cost.
Yeah.
And most, most professionals have some sort of.
They do.
Continuing education for.
Our annual license fees.
Annual license fees.
True.
Variety, variety pack.
Okay, so this is the first reading, I'd like to get a motion for approval of first reading of Policy GAM and the attached GAM R regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Araketti, second by Mr. Webster. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries by a vote of five to nothing. Okay, next, the summer meeting schedule. The superintendents made a recommendation, I think we've already scheduled an August 6th meeting at 6:00 PM for the goal-setting workshop.
And on wheat?
Everybody can attend, August 6th, August 6th, yeah. Okay, and then the superintendents recommended the summer meetings be July 28th and August 25th.
Okay, how it, so, so we're going to talk about a schedule that, we're going to propose a schedule for the superintendent replacement process, and there's a lot of dates in here for interviews, et cetera, and they don't jive with the dates that we just.
Is it conflicting?
Well, no, no, for example, I have us, the week of August 11th interviewing finalists, and school committee vote, begin contract negotiations with chosen candidate. I suppose we could wait till August 25th, but, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, the suggested dates are for the school committee meetings to deal with regular business, meeting one time as opposed to two times during each of those two separate months.
So we do, we do the interviews at a separate meeting anyway.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
But I know what you're saying about, you were talking about even a vote on.
Well, let us, yeah, maybe we, we might want to go over the schedule we're recommending before we vote on the school committee meeting, just to make sure that, you know what, you know what I'm saying? Because there's a lot of dates in here for the superintendent thing.
All right, so let's do that, we'll get to that in a minute, then we're going to look at that under administrative report. We have a lot of minutes, it's adding up to hours here that we have.
A lot of minutes tonight.
Mel and I will go through them really, really fast.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the open session of April 15, 2014.
No, just a quick, page three, under 3C3, second paragraph, third line that starts with participated, it says participated in the second round of interviews, but it should say the administrative council.
Eh.
It says eh.
Okay, we got to correct that?
Eh.
Yeah, Cindy, I'm not sure where I'm.
Cindy, you got that?
Page three. Page three.
3C3, PPS Director Search Update.
Okay.
Second paragraph, it starts with, the third line starts with participated. In the middle of that sentence it says eh, it should say the, unless we're Canadian. Eh?
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 That was her.
Okay, so that's correct, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion by Mr. Webster as amended, second by Ms. Araketti, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries by a vote of five to nothing.
I, no, I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, four, four in favor, not opposed, one abstention.
And who's second?
Oh, Cam, she can't second either, right?
She can't second. Oh, yes, I can second.
She can sec, no.
She can actually vote on, to be honest with you.
Yeah, she could vote too.
You can vote on, even though you weren't here.
Yeah, that's fine, I can put a motion, it's fine.
Okay, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So 5-0.
5-0. We have an executive session, I believe we had two executive sessions that night, one and one before the meeting of what happened. So let's do them separately, the first executive session of April 15th, the early executive session.
Make a move to approve as written.
Somebody else second, because I wasn't there.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Webster, second by Mr. Bowers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
We have one abstention, four in favor, not opposed, one abstention. We have a second executive session after the meeting, a regular meeting on April 15, 2014.
Move to approve as written.
Motion by Mr. Webster.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries by a four in favor, not opposed, one abstention. Open session minutes of April 28, 2014.
Page three, page three's been in trouble here. Roman numeral three, C4, the district calendar, second line, it should say February 6, 2015, not 2014.
Ooh.
That's a good one, that's a good catch, that's a substantive catch.
Okay, ask.
The first one in three years.
As amended, as amended, Mr. Webster.
Move to approve, April 28th minutes as amended.
Second.
Here we have a second, we have a motion by Mr. Webster, second by Ms. Araketti, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries by a vote of five to nothing. April 28th executive session.
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Webster, second by Ms. Araketti, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries by a vote of five to nothing. May 12th open session.
Only one question, was Valerie there that night?
Yes.
Under visitors?
Yes, she was.
Is she listed, it's not listed, though, she's not listed into visitors.
She was there one of those nights, I think.
Yeah, she was there, Valerie.
Yes, she was.
Addie Flynn, is that it?
Valerie Addie Flynn.
Valerie Addie Flynn, our, so she was there, that was it. So I'll move to approve as amended.
We have a motion by Mr. Webster, second by Ms. Araketti, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries by a vote of five to nothing. We have a May 12th executive session minutes.
Move to approve.
I cuss.
We have a motion by Ms. Araketti.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Webster. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries five to nothing. And then we have a May 19th, where am I? May 19th.
Yeah, regular.
Open session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Araketti makes a motion to approve, Mr. Webster.
Yes.
Seconds.
I'm pretty sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries five to nothing.
This is when the doctor transitioned.
And finally, on May 19, 2014, executive session minutes.
Dr. Araketti moves to approve.
Well, that's right, I'm all about that, are you still a doctor?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, just want to.
And Mr. Webster seconds.
We have a motion by Dr. Araketti to approve.
Yes, I move to approve.
And a second by Mr. Webster.
Because she was a doctor as of this meeting.
Hearing no further discussion, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, and the minutes are approved.
Cindy's got my back, she's good.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a budget update, a very brief budget update from Director of Finance and Operations.
It can be as long as you want.
Is Mike still here? Yes, he is, there he is, he's still there.
Is he awake?
Somebody awake, Mike, update on the budget.
So, the budget report was included in your packets this evening, there is not a lot of new information or any impactful changes from the last report. I think we are still in very good shape to close the fiscal year. The drivers that we have been discussing throughout, really, the fiscal year are still at play. We've been able to absorb the special education expenses that have arisen this year and deal with those challenges. As we continue to see, we will experience some surplus funds in our utility budget due to conservative budgeting, so we'll have some funds there to repurpose. The food service program, I'm happy to report that we are seeing a trend where the mail, daily mail counts throughout the district are, are increasing, they are up district-wide 5% from last year, and everyone heard the report from Chartwell's at the May 27th meeting. 5% from last year, and everyone heard the report from Chartwell's at the May 27 meeting. That being said, there will be some additional funds that will be required in the general fund this year to help keep that, you know, that fund whole as we move into next fiscal year. When we look at the payroll, certainly in good, in good shape, majority of payroll expenses are within budgeted lines. We'll see some savings mainly in teacher salary lines that can be repurposed elsewhere. And as you may recall, we are in good shape to meet the carryforwards that we planned for in the fiscal 15 budget process. I, we certainly will meet the prepayments of tuitions, and I think, you know, and certainly hopeful that will exceed, you know, that amount that we planned for during the FY15 budget process.
So we'll make it to the finish line, Mike.
Yeah, we're close, we're in good shape.
All right, good.
I know next meeting we'll talk about the athletic, you know, budget in greater detail, and we're certainly looking at, at the athletic budget and the revolving count and how things are closing out.
Yeah, that's for the possible additional fall coaches, right?
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Bits and donations?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there was one other topic I wanted to talk about under the budget update, one of which involves, just, I just wanted to quickly update the community at the annual town meeting on June 2nd. We did receive approval of two main school capital projects. The school computers, it was approved for $60,000. The focus of those computer replacements will be at the bachelor's school, as those schools, those computers are age 2008 or earlier, so we're certainly very pleased to see the school computers be replaced, it should certainly help fund about 100 computers at the bachelor's school. We also received approval of $40,000 to replace the phone system at the elementary schools. This will ensure that the system being installed at the middle school and high school will be compatible at the elementary level as well, so it'll ensure there'll be some congruency across the district. And that system that will be installed will be a significant upgrade over what is in place today. So, that was positive news that happened at the June 2nd annual town meeting, post approval of the two, you know, school projects, a capital, large capital projects.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep, and then the last thing I'm just gonna hand out, I'll just reference, the final budget books are done and printed.
All right.
And they are available to be distributed this evening.
Oh, this'll be good to read when we go home tonight.
So this, this reflects the budget that was approved at town meeting of $26,764,015, so...
These are way prettier than Carl's book.
Well, the weight reflects, the weight reflects the amount of the budget, I think.
Right, right.
Or the card stock.
Who says paper is dead?
140 pounds.
He said paper is dead.
It is available on the website, right?
It is, so everything, everything is available on the website, the full Capital Improvement Plan Committee's large capital plan is also included on the, on the website, and this, this book is included on the website as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Bits and donations, Mr. Bernard, Principal of the High Schools requesting we accept the donation from the Athletic Boosters Association of $1,128 to support the costs associated with the boys and girls track teams. Not exactly sure what the costs are, but I'm sure that the money will put to good use. So, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept the donation to the boys and girls track teams for gratitude.
We have a motion by Ms. Arakety, second.
Second.
Janine, you'll wait.
Second and third.
Through a third place, it wasn't even close.
I heard you said second.
A second by Mr. Bowers, all who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none, motion carries five to nothing. By the way, I forgot when we hit the student report, I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our athletic teams for the spring season, they had a great season. Boys tennis team, as you heard, lost in the sectional finals. The baseball team, good luck, they're going to play on tomorrow, actually, all right?
Yeah, 4 o'clock.
At Lacher Field in Lowell, they're gonna play for the Eastern Mass Championship, if they win that game, they'll play Saturday for the state championship. For, I don't know Cole Gudzinski, but I am not aware of any other track athletes than North Reading, and I'm sure there might have been one that has won the state.
Well, the thing's incredible about it is that's every division.
It's all divisions.
One, two, three, four, that's the...
I mean, I looked, first thing I looked at in the paper Sunday morning, I was shocked when I saw it, because it's just amazing to be able to, from a Division IV school, to go out and win the state championship.
And I don't know the last time, we also have two relay teams going down to the high school nationals in North Carolina.
And, and also, the lacrosse team made the state tournament, the softball team made the state tournament.
Girls tennis made the state tournament.
And the girls tennis team, and of course, the, the track team won the Division IV championship, so shout out to all of those teams and athletes and coaches. Subcommittee reports, I think the policy subcommittee, do you have anything more than what we already talked about?
Come on.
All right, I, I just thought I'd be courteous and ask Cliff, I really wanted to add something, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Subcommittee schedules, we have the policy subcommittee scheduled for May 30th, May 30th. Yeah, we did that, all right. Okay, yeah, that's already done. Finance planning team, finance planning team is, is meeting June 12th at 8:15 a.m., athletics subcommittee, June 17th at 12:30 p.m. Administrative report, Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to...
I did. In accordance with the new educator evaluation system, I have completed my portfolio for my one and a half years under this new educator evaluation system. Now, I didn't make copies for every single school committee member, but what you did receive tonight is a blue folder, and I'd just like to walk you through that folder for a minute, because tonight you're receiving this information, and on the 23rd, the committee needs to provide a public reading of my evaluation.
So we have to do this between now and...
I'm not be logging.
We have to do this between now and...
I'm having a word recall problem.
We have to do this not between now and 23rd.
Between now and the 23rd.
Okay.
So, we have a, an evaluation subcommittee that I'm sure will need to collect the results from each individual member and compile a composite summative evaluation.
So we need to get these to that person before the 23rd, the meeting on the 23rd?
And that person will be?
Janine.
Janine?
Janine.
Thank you for volunteering.
Do we have this online?
Yes, I'm gonna tell you what's in the packet and what you can have online, okay? So if you look at the right-hand side of the packet, typically, an educator would complete what's called artifact sheets and sit down with the evaluator and go through those artifact sheets and the portfolio with the evaluator. But since I have five evaluators, I completed a summary of a summative evaluation progress report. It looks very similar to the two mid-cycle reports that I did for you. So, you're going to see that if you go to page two of nine, I gave you an update on my professional practice goal, on page three, an update of my student learning goal and what's been accomplished. If you look at the bottom, you'll see artifacts, so what those artifacts pertain to are documents that are included in this portfolio binder that I brought with me this evening. So, I've identified those artifacts for you. Then on page four, you'll see a summary of the beginning of the three, four, and five district goals that are part of my educator plan, and then following those, there's a superintendent's rubric. There are four standards on that rubric with priority indicators under each standard. So I provided a, an overview for you as well as listing what artifacts are included in the portfolio that may be a little different from what are included in my goals. Right behind the summative evaluation progress report is my educator plan that you approved back in February, I believe, or March of 2013. On the left-hand side are resources that will help you in completing this evaluation. First is the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report. If you look at the front page, it tells you, step one, assess progress toward goals, complete page three first, and then come back to this. Step two, assess performance on standards, complete pages four through seven first, then come back to this first page. And all the other pages I filled in for you of what my professional practice goal is, my student learning goal, the three district improvement goals, and those are on page three of seven. And each one of you has your name at the top of this summative evaluation report, but if I give it to you electronically, you can write in your own name.
But, so page three, we gotta start filling things out here, it says professional practice, we have to put the description down, 'cause there's nothing here. On page three, it says professional practice one, description...
Oh, no, I said, I gave you the blank. I have one here that's already filled in. When I send it to you electronically, I'll send you the one that's filled in.
Oh, 'cause that just made me nervous, 'cause I was thinking we've gotta describe your goals, and I don't...
No, 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 and Jerry, you can take this one.
All right. Do you think this is really necessary since you're retiring?
I completed this portfolio.
We're gonna validate that process, Karen.
Yes.
Oh, my God.
So, right behind that is the superintendent rubric at a glance, in yellow, you'll see what the priority standards are, indicators are, and the elements of those. This past year, the administrative team identified priority standards in the same way, I mean, indicators, the same way that the teachers did. So that's where you're gonna see a lot of my evidence focused on. And then the full rubric with all the language for unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient and exemplary, for each indicator and each element under each indicator is behind the rubric at a glance.
Can someone carry my stuff on for me?
So, this, this is the process, if, if, Janine, if you are going to be the person that will be compiling this report, I suggest that, and, school committee members get their information to you no later than, I'd say, this Friday or next Monday, because you need to compile that information and get it back to me by the 18th, so I can include it in the packets that go to you on the 20th in preparation for the 23rd.
So, I need, I need until Monday, so...
I need until I ask you...
No.
Yeah.
No, we're gonna do it...
We're doing construction this week, so Monday would be great.
Monday?
Monday is the...
16th.
16th.
Yeah, of June.
Janine, do you wanna take the portfolio?
Janine, could you read that over tonight?
Could you summarize it and tell us what to put in our reports?
That's what your summary is, I summarized it.
Oh.
It's already in your packet.
Already good.
'Cause I was just gonna give you all A's, but...
There you go.
But there's no, but there's no multiple choice, it's not A, B, C, D, you can't just put C and go all the way down.
This is the park for school committee right here, tonight.
Oh, my God.
Not only do we understand your performance, but we have to apply.
And you need it by the 18th, you said?
I would need the compiled results, and feel free to give me a call if you have any questions.
And you're gonna email us the, so we can do it online, and then you can email it to Janine.
Yes.
And Jerry will do it hard copy.
I gave Jerry a hard copy, I already filled it.
Yes, all right.
With the goals.
Okay, further under administrative report, I'm gonna ask Mel and Karen to give us an update on superintendent search processes, everybody knows. We voted to have an internal search for a superintendent, we put together qualifications, we put together, I think, a request for applications. We were trying to put together a subcommittee, we had made up the, I think we'd agreed on the makeup of the subcommittee, so I'll turn it over to either Karen or Mel.
I was gonna say, I'll start with the calendar, then I'll turn it over to Karen.
I'll ask Mel to start with the calendar.
I'll turn it over to Karen for the, the candidates that we're receiving, we got a great response from the community and the staff here. So, I would like to see, we would like to see, tomorrow, June 10th, the superintendent position posted internally. I had June 17th, I'm gonna change that, June 23rd, we will appoint the candidate review selection committee. I don't have this, I didn't print this out, it's on my phone, I'm reading it right now. June 24th is deadline for application submission, is two weeks enough time? That's the question I have there. July 1st, semifinalists selected. That would mean we would have to have a meeting, though, correct? An executive session meeting?
Yes.
Well, well, July 1st, semifinalists selected, who's selecting them?
We are.
The committee?
School committee.
The school committee.
Hold the phone.
Don't, yeah.
No, the, the committee that's gathering to actually review the applicants.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
They would, they would do, they would do that, I think.
They are gonna be doing it.
So maybe July 1st is too soon, if we only have till June 24th, if we have June 24th as the deadline.
It's too soon.
So let me keep going here, someone, I hope someone, week of July 7th, review committee interviews semifinalists. Week of July 14th, finalists selected. So the review committee, actually, no, they would select them when they, when they, it would be the same week.
Yeah, this is a one-shot.
So week of July 7th would be candidate review committee, interview semifinalists, and choose as finalists, week of July 7th.
And those would be the people you'd recommend to the school committee?
That, right, recommend the school committee.
The committee will make either recommendation, then there may be no recommendation, but that's the idea.
I put two weeks here, weeks of July 21st and/or 28th, finalists meet and, finalists meet and greet with public.
Okay.
So the idea is, again, as we discussed, we would have a, a public opening, social reception, where the community could come in and interact, and then provide feedback if they wish to, written to the committee.
Right. Week of August 11th, finalists interviews and SC vote for new superintendent, if, you know, and SC vote, begin contract negotiations with chosen candidate if we choose a candidate.
Okay, so Mel, quickly, by June 10th, which is tomorrow, we would actually post for the job for the position?
That's my recommendation.
And it's been revised.
We would, we would appoint the committee members at a meeting on June 23rd?
That's, yes.
Okay, and on June 24th, we would close applications?
Yes.
And what was the July 4th date then, again?
July 1st was the, the, the review committee selects semifinalists, but that might be too soon.
Yeah.
We may need to push that one.
Okay, so July 7th, you're gonna review?
No, because we're gonna have to push everything back now, because if we say, I, I don't even know what, I don't have a count, July 8th, semifinalists selected, that would mean the review committee has to meet, look at all the applicant, whatever applicants we have, and then decide who's gonna move forward to the, to the interviews.
To the next, to the next step, to the interviews, okay.
Right, so you could say July 8th for that.
Okay.
But maybe you just say week of, whenever.
I think we need to give a hard date, and we can, we can flex it.
What day in the week is July 8th?
I'm looking right now.
July 8th is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We could just make it a Wednesday and say July 9th.
July 9th.
And then I'm gonna ask Kathy to weigh in on all this. July 9th, so July 9th is semifinalists selected.
Yep.
Do we say, I mean, July 16th, candidate, the review committee interviews semifinalists?
July 16th?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, they interview and select finalists to go to the school committee, on July 16th, I said?
Yep.
And then, as I said, I put down two weeks, weeks of July 21st and July 28th, finalists meet and greets with public.
Yep.
So I think we should schedule one for each finalist that we have.
Yes.
Do, do you wanna do them a week apart, or do you wanna do...
Well, it depends on how many we have, so, we may need to do two in one week.
And then I had, I had week of August 11th, we could do it sooner, we interview the finalists and then determine whether we're going to, who we're going to appoint as a new superintendent, and begin contract negotiations.
That's a pretty ambitious schedule, and we have until, you know, and we have more time.
And then October 14th is start date, 'cause the 13th is a holiday.
We have more time to that, if we wanna, if you decide you wanna spread it out a little bit more, you could do it.
I don't necessarily think we need more time, I think it's a, it's a flexible, it is an internal candidate search, less travel, no side visits, for example, but we want the person to start, so there is a significant amount of overlap, but obviously, we have the school starting.
Kind of give us a couple of months.
Right, so, based on informal chatter at our last meeting, you know, we discussed potentially having the start date be in August for that reason, so we changed the schedule